For December 2nd, 2019, if you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic.
To the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Lowman, would you mind doing the correspondence, please?
Okay, yeah, I will. Thanks. Well, we have one letter here from Kansas Historical Society concerning the CR Building in Lincoln. It says, "We are pleased to inform you that their 11-16-2019 meeting, the Kansas Historic Sites Board of Review approved the nomination of the CR Building to the Register of Historic Kansas Places." The Register of Historic Kansas Places, also known as the State Register. So, then they go on and list, you know, I think that's Kelly Larson's building, somebody was saying, the one that she bought, you know. So, that's just an information thing, Alexis.
Okay.
There's no action by us, I don't think.
It's the old Duckwall store.
Yeah, the old Duckwall store. Okay, now we have some bills here from, one from DH Pace yet, for, it is for fire check certification. I suppose it's to certify these doors, if they've got them installed, I'm not sure if they do, for $715. I don't...
He called because that bill was past due and he sent it to me, but it was something that was done in September, so I don't know if we're responsible for that, if that's why it hasn't been paid, or...
Right, it's dated the September 9th, so it is for $715 fire check certification. I think when they, we had them come back and agreed to have them go ahead with the fire doors, they did the certification first, or an inspection, and I don't know if that's part of that, or what. So, it says $715 fire check certification, and you want me to go on there with some other bills also.
Dawn, are you able to pull up what we currently have in Fund 44 for the nursing home?
Once my computer comes up, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we made a motion last week not to move the rest of the nursing home funds to the general account, is that correct?
I understood the motion was that it was going to be absorbed into County General.
Yeah.
Correct.
So...
But there are two funds for the nursing home, we have to remember, two.
Yeah. Do you have your Fund 44, or do you have your report that I can...
Yeah, I think I do.
I didn't think about powering this laptop up for...
This one?
Yeah.
I think we just need to have an idea of where we are financially, because we were going to withhold the, what did it come out to be, $28,000?
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand, maybe.
But see, yeah, but now we have these bills come in, I don't know, do we pay them or wait till next year?
Fund 44 had an ending balance of $264,370.
Is that the general fund, or...
That's the fund that the rent payments used to go into, and we would pay expenses out of, and then anything that was left in County General, we normally transferred into.
So, we could use that account to pay these, is that what we're saying?
And did we deposit that last $3,000 of rent check into there?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there's another $3,000.
Okay, so I think what we should do for the rest of this month, to the end of the year, is just keep that other money in the County General that we voted to withhold as a rent payment, and then go ahead and pay any continuing bills out of the Fund 44. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Works for me.
Okay.
Because some of these are, if we don't pay them, and they get behind, I don't, you know, what they'll do.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not trying to not pay them, I just think we need to pay attention to where the money's coming from, and at this point, we should be utilizing that Fund 44, and maybe that's even where we can get some of the money for the maintenance agreement if we do well on the RFP solicitation.
Okay, well, then, okay, so I'll go on with other...
Yeah, just initial that DH Pace bill and give it to Dawn.
We get approved to pay it, in other words, right?
Please, I think that's fine, because we were, we did take on the responsibility for the doors, if that's part of the inspection.
Well, I think it is. And now also, we have a, we have some more bills from the, for the nursing home. We have a bill from High Tech Fire, Alarm, Sales and Service LLC, and it's for, and it was dated the November 14th, and it's for $216, and it's for electromagnetic door holder.
Uh-huh.
I suppose that's some more...
That stays with the building, I think that's fine.
That's fixing the doors, I think, probably parts they had to get, or something. I don't know for sure, but. And now we also had a, we're having a recommended maintenance modules proposal for Lincoln County from, called Cone, K-O-N-E, Elevator Escalator Up, they're a corporation. They're recommending that we propose to perform a door maintenance module on the elevator for $811.20, and also a hoistway clean down, which proposes to perform a hoistway clean down on the subject elevator, and that's for $1,310. And additional maintenance items, it says, Cone recommends that the starter contacts be replaced and the hydraulic oil be filtered on the subject elevators to ensure safe operation.
You know, I thought we were in a maintenance agreement, a yearly contract for the elevator, because I remember talking about, couldn't we use the same company to try to save some money for the courthouse elevator and the one out there, but we never did get a bid from anyone. I guess Dawn's not in there, she...
No, Dawn left here temporarily. This is, I don't know how fast we need to act on this, there's just a recommended maintenance module proposal.
We can wait and see what happens, because I'm pretty sure we were paying a yearly lease agreement for a service-type program.
Well, they have a terms and conditions, but maybe that's part of our...
Maybe that's the renewal.
Maybe something like that. It's a door-operated and landing door maintenance module, so I don't know if we, maybe we should just postpone this for a while, don't you think?
That sounds fine to me.
Because I said, it's a proposal, it's not like it's a bill. So, I'll set that aside. Then we also have, what else here? Is that the only one from the nursing home? I think so. And then we have a Fullston Attorneys at Law, a Board of County Commissioners bill to us, matter of transition of Lincoln Park Manor operation, and it was sent to Mrs. O'Hare. It says, "I have a responsibility to review all firms' accounts receivable. Our records show outstanding invoices on the above referenced account for more than 60 days. The following summary lists all outstanding invoices at this time," and it's a bill for $1,080. It dated September 12th, so...
I think that's that bill that you guys had debated, and I must not have got it back to pay.
Okay, it says here, "Previous balance was $2,700," and it says, "Current charges due was $1,080," and it's for August 21st telephone call, teleconference with Jennifer O'Hare, review, email correspondence, and commission letter to K-Dads with...
Yeah, my issue with that is, the commission gave a directive to the county attorney to perform a function, which was to file a civil suit in order to collect the past due rent. We never spoke with the attorney. If she needed additional help and she was using that attorney, that needs to be taken care of by her, because we were not asking for correspondence from Mr. Hay.
Okay, well, then it's, there's another date, August 22nd, another call, I guess, and then August 23rd also. So, it's, so it's three calls to Mr. Hay, total of $1,080. I don't know what you want to do with that.
Well, if you remember correctly, when we were dealing with Mr. Hay, we were calling him, and we were having conference calls so that we could speak to him directly. If she needed additional information from another attorney for something that we requested, that should be on her budget.
Okay, well, I don't know. She initialed it, so I guess she signed off on payment. I don't know what we'll do. So, do you want, you want to wait till you get back next week, and we'll review these again?
Sure.
Okay. So, we won't do anything with these right now?
Okay.
If that's fine with you?
Yes, that's fine.
Now, the electromagnetic door holder for $216, I will approve that, is that okay? Or, I mean, you can approve it, I'll sign it, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Because that's part of the door stuff. Okay, I think that's all we have for mail that I know of. And oh, we have a letter, oh, this was, already went over this, with this building. This is the building, that's just the Kelly Larson building notification. Okay, well, it's about 10:15, 16:15 here, Alexis. I guess we have Mr. Granzow coming here at 10:30, so for right now, we have no further unless Dawn or...
I made a motion, we approve the minutes as prepared.
Okay, yeah, we'll review the minutes, okay, Dawn? Or, I mean, Alexis?
Yes.
Okay, we'll review the, Jim made a motion to approve the minutes, and I have also reviewed them at home, and...
And the nursing home part of it has everything you guys were wanting in it?
I think so.
I think so. I know that was a confusing motion, and...
I'll make a simple little motion, get all of it.
Well, we modified it several times, and it was complex because of what we're doing. Alexis, you okay with the minutes, or do you want to discuss them?
I'm just, I'm just reviewing from here for another time, when she sends them either the way that I'm supposed to, so I'm just gonna double check here.
Sure. Yeah, review the motion for the nursing home stuff, because that was a complex issue, in my opinion. I noticed we say the attached Exhibit B. Now, Exhibit B, that was the, isn't that the items we said that we would fix or pay for, and then all the ones that he would fix and pay for? Is that correct?
So, Exhibit A is supposed to be the actual inventory list, if I understand this.
That's right.
And then Exhibit B is the breakdown of responsibility between the landlord and tenant.
Yep. Okay, now, we didn't really define what Exhibit B is very well in this motion, I guess.
It was reattached to.
Yeah, but it doesn't say in here what it's for, but I guess we don't need to.
Well, just Exhibit B was attached to it, and Jennifer took that when she left as an attachment.
Right, that, so, I guess it'd be understood that it's for responsibilities of the owner versus the leasee.
I can add that in parentheses if you want.
Well, that, that would maybe, because if we look at that a couple of years from now, everybody might say, "What's this Exhibit B?" Of course, you can look at the lease, and then you'll see it.
When it's approved, yeah.
So, let everyone do, Dawn, and it's no problem, I mean...
I have a suggestion. At the end of that, let's add, Exhibit B is... Are you ready?
Um, I'm finding it. That's going to be right before the executive session with County Attorney, right, for...
Yes.
Yes, okay, got it. Exhibit...
So, Exhibit B to the Lincoln Park Manor lease is a list of responsibilities for both landlord and tenant. And I do think it helps to define which expenses we really need to take on and which ones we should not be covering, such as cleaning products, et cetera, so...
That's correct, and it's also in the minutes, so if somebody ever reads the minutes, they would know that and wouldn't have to go to look at the lease, but which, you know, which would have it also. It gives a little bit better explanation, in my opinion.
Okay, so I'm going to put Exhibit B to Lincoln Park Manor lease as a list of responsibilities of the landlord and tenant.
Correct.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Mr. Granzow's in the hall.
Okay, now, okay, well, I'll second the amended, you want to make your motion, you made a motion.
I'll make a motion to amend it, as you have there.
Second the amended motion. Alexis, do you have any more discussion?
I would just like to read that section, just for clarity, and make sure that it sounds right. I'm going to read the whole portion of the minutes under the nursing home. The chairman reconvened the meeting to regular session at 4:00 PM with no action taken. Chairman announced the following. The county has budgeted for maintenance of the nursing home facility $160,000 in 2019 and $100,000 in 2020. And we have a double that, Dawn. Can you see that paragraph? You have that, that recurring.
Oh, okay. Okay, got it.
Now, the current lease with Lincoln Park Manor is set to expire on May 23rd, 2020. That during the executive session, you can probably take out another that, the board reached an agreement to seek bids for the sale of the building through an RFP process, and that will include a clause that the building will not be able to be sold in the future for anything other than nursing home. The county will prepare the RFP within 60 days, and the RFP will include a three-year maintenance agreement. During the executive session, Grace discussed purchases that need made at the county's expense, including the following: installation of a security system, new call system, and installation of a wonder guard system. Grace had estimated approximate amount of back rent at $60,000, and you can probably take on another that, Dawn.
Okay.
Grace had agreed to extend the lease for six months to give the county more time to determine a future direction. James Gableman moved to extend the lease between the county and Lincoln Park Manor as is through November 22nd, 2020, and attached Exhibit B to the lease, seconded by me. Motion carried. James Gableman moved to ask the county attorney to prepare an RFP to consider the following things, and instructed the county attorney to provide the following details for the motion. RFP will be prepared and submitted within 60 days. Potential business will have 30 days to respond. Building to be sold is known as Lincoln Park Manor will include Exhibit B that will be attached to the extension of the lease agreement, will include a three-year maintenance agreement, and will include a clause that any future sale of the building will be limited to use as a nursing home, seconded by Randy Lowman. Motion carried. No annual dollar amount was given to the three-year maintenance agreement. Correct.
I just put that as like a notation for me, so that way, if we get to researching...
Absolutely, absolutely, because that, that can be determined at a later date, depending on what kind of response we get from the RFPs. I moved to preserve the remainder of 2019 budget line item for Lincoln Park Manor estimated, and we reduced it to $26,840 from $40,000 to be absorbed by the county to recover a portion of the approximate debt, seconded by James Gableman. Motion carried. And then I moved to amend the motion, oh, that was just the amendment.
Yeah. I wasn't sure how to do that, so I struck it out above, so that way, the motion, if ever anybody just grabbed that motion, would have the right dollar.
You know what, I actually think that amendment needs to be before you finish the rest of the motion, because it looks like we had a split vote on the amendment, but we didn't. We actually had a split vote on the motion itself. Do you remember that?
Oh, okay. So, take out the motion carried part?
Um, correct, correct. Take out motion carried, and then put it after the split vote.
Okay.
Leave the amendment in there, and then I would put, yeah, you have motion carried after, after the amendment.
Yeah.
So, don't, don't show the split vote until after it's finished. There you go. Yeah, just take out first motion carried.
Okay.
Because we didn't vote on it, you see what I'm saying? We had to actually, the amendment first, okay. Grace, Grace provided the amount to replace the current call system in the amount of $13,142.91 from Alliance Monitor. The board approved replacing the call system. Grace contended that portions of the back rent are not owed, as he claims the county inhibited them from gaining residence during the renovation project, for which they requested... Okay, Dawn, take out four, because it's the renovation project they requested.
Okay.
That there was no air conditioning in certain parts of the building at various times. The board requested that Grace provide them with a list of days affected by these issues, as well as a census information for the facility from 2018 through current. I believe the rest of that is correct, if you follow some of those changes.
Okay.
Now, Appendix B. Appendix B was going to be attached right there, right?
And then we, at the end of that paragraph, we've added Exhibit B to Lincoln Park Manor lease is a list of responsible, responsibilities of the landlord and tenant.
Yes.
And that, that I'm just going to put in parentheses?
Yes.
Okay.
That amended, that amended motion, those are the amendments. The motion has been made to amend the original motion, and seconded by Randy.
Are you ready for a vote, Alexis?
I didn't hear what Mr. Gableman was explaining, currently.
Well, we've originally agreed to, Jim made the motion, we've amended it, and I seconded it. Are you ready to vote?
Oh, on the minutes? Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. Those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Vote up. Motion carries for the minutes as amended.
Mr. Granzow and Mr. Serene are here now, if you're ready for them.
Yes, I can see, I think, we're what, I have 10:22. Is there anything else that we need to address as far as our correspondence?
I guess while we're on the nursing home subject, so, I sent you guys out an email of where I've got the past due balance being at from the time of 2009 forward. The one question that I had was when, like, this motion for the $26,800, is that relinquishing him of his debt? Should I be recording that as a payment received, or not? I wasn't sure how to do that.
Could I first read the email you sent?
Yes, and I, a couple of years ago, if you remember, you had done the same motion for like, I want to say $12,000. So, went ahead and recorded it as a credit, but I wasn't 100% sure, so those were the few things that I wanted to look at, or...
Okay, I will read the emails from the clerk to the board, and it says, "Attached is what I come up with for a total back rent from 2009 to current, and I do have a couple of questions regarding the intentions. In 2017, the board cut the maintenance fund by $12,250, which was half of the back rent due. I have also attached those minutes for reference. It is under the motion. I believe that by this motion, the back rent should be reduced. Is Mr. Grace responsible for the original purchase of supplies, fixtures, and equipment? This spreadsheet includes them. I think, as discussed previously, he is, however, your intentions for back rent, only or all debt, as this spreadsheet includes all debt, that's a question. More of a statement. So, the lease agreement was modified in December 2017 to include $400 per month for back rent, and that was, I'm saying, as an addition to his actual census requirement for the payment. So, from that point forward, I have another column, amount of rent due with the back rent, and a column with just the rent, as the back rent is included. If I did not do this, then it looks like Mr. Grace owes $400 a month more than what he actually owes, and I could not find where we withheld anything from the maintenance agreement in 2018. Okay, so I would like to explain for the board, who was not here, when sale happened of Lincoln Park Manor from the previous owner, Kristen Robinson, to the current owner, John Grace, there was about a $25,000 debt. It was, it looked like it would come out to $24,500. And so, what happened was, Mr. Grace offered to pay half of it, which was $12,250, and he was going to do that in installments of $400 a month. So, the board made a motion to withhold the other half, which was $12,250, from the total budget that year. And Dawn, did that get absorbed into the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, so I do believe that should reduce the total amount, but remember, we have to count the total amount owing purchased. So, from that point forward, he was going to add $400 in payments every month on top of the rent. Do Mr. Gableman and Mr. Lowman have access to the spreadsheet you did? Did you guys get that printed out, or...
Well, Dawn emailed it to us. I reviewed it on, I haven't printed it out.
I'd say I didn't print it out. I will print it out, and then we can always come back.
I don't have copies here, do you, Jim? No.
That's okay, we can clarify later, but I think we just need to all be on the same page. That $12,250, since it was never paid, did he make any payments on that $400?
Yes, just a few.
A few?
I want to say a couple. You can kind of see where I added the second column in, and you can, so the dollar amounts that is like $3,500, and it says $3,900, those payments were actually $3,900 for the $400 payment. Because I, originally, I had the $3,900 in there, but then I realized what it was doing, it was like adding it to it when the back was...
I see. So, I think for our accounting purposes, it may just be a better choice to put down the original $12,250 as debt, deduct his several $400 payments from that, come up with a new balance as prior debt, add that to the current debt, and then reduce that by the $26,800. Does that make sense?
Okay.
I think that's the best way to keep it straight for our record-keeping. Then we can put back to monthly payments, monthly balance due versus monthly payments.
Okay.
Because the way you have it on the spreadsheet, it's fine if you understand what the agreements were, but if we don't have that on paper, maybe we could just have a total debt. And if there is a negotiation for a sale, that would obviously be included as part of the discussion. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gableman and Mr. Lowman, did you have any questions about that? Do you understand that process that we did prior to you being on the board?
Yeah, we'll study it more when we get the spreadsheet and stuff, but I think it's fairly straightforward. I understand what you're saying.
I somewhat do, I somewhat do, but I understand that, yeah, that was part of the previous transaction, but...
Right.
Right, we can review it more later when you get back, maybe, and go over, maybe I'll print out what Dawn sent too, and I can review it better, so...
Well, I did it Excel, so that way, all we just have to do is adjust the numbers or break it, break the sheet, and start all over, as far as it, everything's there, so we just have to change the calculations.
Okay.
Well, and I think the most important part is to understand that we have an estimated amount coming in every month based on the census, but we still have a debt that has been unpaid. And in addition to that, we have Fund 44, where we have collected the rent, so we really need to look at all of that as we set up the RFP.
Okay. Yeah, I'm confused, I'm kind of confused on the form for the Fund 44, and how that's different than the regular fund and all that stuff.
So, every year, out of the general fund, we allocate a certain dollar amount, and as you know, it went from $120,000 in 2019 to $100,000 even in 2020. That's where we expend the money from.
Right.
Where we, where we collect the money from the nursing home is called Fund Forty-four.
So, if Mr. Grace makes a payment, it goes into Fund Forty-four?
Yes, and that's, and that's where they used to do bigger projects from.
Okay.
And kind of put the money back into the facility. We used to never have the county general maintenance agreement, but then the rent wasn't coming in.
Okay.
So, they started elevating the money.
And since I've been here, we've been paying the bills out of just the regular.
County general.
County, oh, county general, I thought we had, yeah, which is, and we budgeted the nursing home a hundred and twenty. And that's come out of that, you line item that, but it's still out of county general.
Correct.
Okay.
And then if you had a bigger project, like, I think we paid for the architect out of the Fund Forty-four.
Okay, well, Alexis, should we move on, Mr. Granzel?
Yes, I have, I have ten thirty right now.
Okay, and they're here and so, welcome you guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Serena, Mr. Granzel.
Morning.
Thank you.
And Alexis is obviously onsite, so.
Right, somewhere, yes. I had talked to my board, the, at our last board meeting about a couple of things. A number of things involving the county commission and asked permission to come up here today to continue that, that discussion. I have a couple of things here. I'm going to start off with a, a request that I got on October thirty-first. It was sent to me from an email account called LCcommission@lincolncoKansas.org. The commission has approved a motion to require the hospital to provide the following documents to the commission immediately. All contracts with providers, all contracts with service companies, financial records for billing write-offs, non HIP information for the past two years. There are a couple of things here, and I discussed this with my board before trying to come back and discuss this with the county commissioners. I acknowledge request. I acknowledge the email. I think I sent that on, yes, November the first and some things of that nature. As you know, under the Kansas Open Records Act, we are able to bill for our time, supplies, and efforts to fulfill your request. If we find that request too burdensome, we can deny the request. My initial thing, since you are the county commissioners and we are a county hospital, was to try to honor the request you had made. A preliminary estimate based on identifying, tracking down all of these contracts. I think it's going to take two of us, which is me, myself, and Tanya Seitz, about eighty hours to do that. And then our attorney has requested that he review all of the documents we proposed sending you prior to sending them to you. We would also be looking at payment for those documents and our work prior to delivery of those documents. My initial estimate is that this is going to probably cost the county a little over twelve thousand dollars. Might go as high as fifteen thousand dollars by the time we get into it with all of that. So, before proceeding with that, I wanted to make sure if you knew the preliminary cost, if you still wish to proceed on requesting all those documents.
Alexis, do you have any input?
Um, yes, I'm looking at my emails here. And you conveniently omit, sir, the email that you received as a follow-up to what you're addressing?
Well, no, I, I beg, I beg your pardon. I am addressing this in date order.
Excuse me, you're interrupting what I'm saying. And I clearly explained in another email that we agreed that the chairperson would come and inspect these documents. Therefore, you do not have to actually provide all physical copies, which you were trying to charge twelve thousand dollars for. In this same email correspondence, I have it in front of me. I said that, please give the earliest time I can come as the chairperson to inspect these documents in person, which will not require you to spend more of our money on attorneys or copies. And you failed to reply to that. And now you are coming before the board saying that you are wishing to charge a certain dollar amount. And I told you at the board meeting, at the hospital board meeting, that we had amended this request. We did it as a commission. They appointed me to be the inspector of the records. And now you are failing to address that we told you, we no longer require you to handle every single piece of paper and copy it. We would like to inspect these documents. And we can start with one at a time to make your life easier.
Well, Commissioner, I respectfully submit that I was never notified that the initial request was withdrawn.
I have the, you're rescinding.
Now, if I could finish, please. If I could finish, please.
At eleven thirty-five AM.
I was never informed. And you can, we can go through this and go through this, but I was never informed that the initial request was rescinded. I did get a, I, I did get, I did get.
At two thousand nineteen at eleven thirty-five AM. You have the email, sir. I have it in front of me.
Yes, and it's.
Eleven thirty-five AM.
And it says in the text of that that this is a personal request for you to come and inspect those records. And it adds some records to it. And I did respond to your email. And as I explained to my board the other day, with what I'm looking at, I have several requests for records in front of me. I'm taking them in date order from the one sent on October thirty-first. I never got an email from anyone rescinding this initial request. I got a follow-up request that said you wanted to personally inspect some of the documents and some other billing records. Now, I, I am trying to.
You are confusing, you are confusing two different things. I have a personal request in for myself to inspect documents, I do.
Yes.
But you are confusing that with the commission's directive. And I have a response to your email from the commission's email dated November fourth, two thousand nineteen at eleven thirty-five AM. That is during our meeting, which the commission appointed me as the inspector of the records. You have that email, sir, because I have it in front of me.
Right.
So, please stop confusing my personal request to you with the commission's correspondence.
All I'm saying is that I have no evidence that that initial request for that massive amount of documents was ever rescinded by this commission.
It's in the minutes, sir, it's in the minutes of our.
And follow-up to that, follow-up to that, I did get a personal request from you. And as I was telling my board the other night, I'm going to take these in date order, which means that your request to personally inspect this will be after I finish the first request that you've made as an entire Board of County Commissioners. Your personal request would be secondary to this one. We're taking them in date order. I also have some other record requests from a Mr. David Gersman. Those will be third and fourth. I'm just trying to inform the Board of County Commissioners why this may take some time and involve quite a bit of money. So, it's, now, if you wish to send me formal notice that you have passed a resolution rescinding your request of October thirty-first, then I can return, then I can return, I can return to your personal request that came the week earlier. Okay? That's, that's just the way things work.
Resolution for anything pertaining to records request. I'm not sure that you understand what you're talking about.
I'm not sure you understand what you're talking about. I think the, the trail of emails, evidence, is rather clear on its face.
It is very clear, sir, and you omitted the fact that we responded as a commission, saying that we no longer requested the copy.
No, you did not. That came from your personal email, Ms. Flug.
No, it did not, sir.
Yes, it did.
Because I have it in front of me. And if you'd like to see it, Dawn can open the commission's email right there in front of you so that you can see.
Well, I am not in receipt of that and I can't explain why I would not be in receipt of it. If you say that this transpired, as you said. All of my stuff is either directly from you, which I also have a copy of here, I believe.
Well, I'm just going to, I'm just going to go ahead and forward this.
On November, on, on November the seventh of two thousand and nineteen, and this is from the email address flug.a@gmail.com. This is a personal cora request pursuant to state statute, you must provide, et cetera, et cetera. It says right in your lead sentence, this is a personal cora request. It says nothing about rescinding the prior one from the entire county commissioner or anything of that nature.
Sir, again, you are crossing two different cora requests. What you just read was my personal request. You did not read what the commission responded to you, and I just sent it to Dawn. So, if Dawn would please open her email, she can read you right from the commission's email that we directed myself as the chairperson for inspection to save you the cost and time of continuing to charge us for your phone calls to the attorney and making copies. I responded to you during the commission meeting as the board approved me to come and inspect the documents to save the time and money.
Was that on, was that on seven November at one ten PM? Because that's the only, that's the only thing I have from you. And it's a personal request from your personal email account.
Sir, it was on the fourth at eleven thirty-five AM. I already read you the timestamp. Monday, November fourth, eleven thirty-five AM, from the commission's email, not from my personal email.
I do not have that email. I never received it. That may be part of what's going on here. The last, the last thing I sent to you, what you said on your email of the fourth at twelve thirty-five PM, perhaps I do have. You say, Mr. Granzel, we have not requested any HIP information as was previously stated. State law requires you have this information readily available for our inspection. Please give me the earliest time I can come to inspect these documents in person, which will not require you.
You just omitted a part.
As the chairman, I'm sorry, yes, as the chairman to discuss chairperson. Doesn't say chairperson of what, but it says as chairperson to come personally inspect those documents. Now, that does not in any way, shape, or form rescind or revoke the original request. I do not see that in the text of your email here. So, I reply to you, we will continue to maintain the position and process outlined in my email of one November nineteen, which is based on the advice of counsel. We need to spend a great deal of time making sure the documents the commission has requested do not have HIPA identifiers such as date of birth and social security numbers. So, it's not just, you can throw around the word HIPA and suddenly, oh, I'm making a non HIPA requirement. I'm trying to follow the evidentiary path here and the path of these requests and the way they're phrased. And I am saying that no one has rescinded that original request for what is probably a couple of file cabinets full of documents that we have to review and go forward. Next, if the commission would care to rescind that initial request, then I am prepared to address your request on November the fourth in a, as timely a fashion as I can.
During the meeting on November fourth, which was a Monday at eleven thirty-five AM, when I sent you the email from the commission's email, sir, the board appointed me to inspect the records that we had requested. And that is the correspondence that I gave you from the commission's email. Now, in addition to that.
I failed to see that. I've, you may have a recollection of what you think transpired during that meeting, but I don't see any of that in your email of November the fourth. And there, there's no rescission of the prior request. You know, they say as chairperson, but not as chairperson of what? And it comes from your private account.
It is not from my private account. Please stop spreading misinformation. You just read November fourth, eleven thirty-five AM, from the commission's email, sir. During the meeting, I emailed you, during the meeting, from the commission's email.
As previously stated in the original request, which is discussing the original open record request.
Thank you.
I have a question. But it's a secondary request. The original request was not rescinded.
Sir, during our meeting, the board appointed me as the inspector of the records for our original request. And what we did was say that you do not need to provide us copies. I will inspect them because you have to keep those records available for inspection at any time. You know that, it's in the law.
Why don't we make a, just to clean all this up and get it over with instead of going back and forth, why don't we make a motion to rescind our first request officially? And that can go away and then you personally can go there, Alexis, to the hospital and review the documents with Mr. Granzel individually. Should we do something like that?
Sure, I, I will do whatever the board.
Well, then we could get over this, back and forth, who did what when with what emails and so forth. So, I'll make a motion to rescind the original request that you do all this work with all these documents with the attorneys. I don't know what that, what that, when the original date was or whatever.
Thirty-one October.
How about you say rescind the original cora request?
Okay, I, I make a motion to rescind the original cora request.
And that the four November request that refers to the previous request, it is understood that that previous request was a thirty-one October because that missed the items that we want to look at.
Well, but the items listed by Mrs. Flug in the November the fourth email changed.
That is absolutely untrue. And you are again convoluting my personal request to you, which I can do as a citizen or anyone else. And you're, you're convoluting it with the request from the board. So, please stop. The original cora request from the board has never changed, except we told you to be able to inspect the records instead of request them to be copied and printed out.
But, that may be, Alexis, but let's get over all this and move on. Let's rescind the original request, then you can go there to the hospital and inspect individually.
Well, I, I will maintain, I will maintain, it is not at all clear what you're requesting.
What was that, Alexis?
In the October.
I second Randy's motion to rescind the original cora request.
Is the October thirty-one clear as to what records we want?
Well, Alexis, we'll review whatever, we, we gave her the authority to just physically go over there and review like one at a time or whatever on this last motion, didn't we last week?
What records are you going to review is what I'm asking.
That's what I'm asking.
Does the thirty-one October message indicate what records we want to look at?
It says all provider contracts. But what do you mean by all provider contracts? Does that mean contracts with radiologists, pathologists, other specialists that we have out there? Those are provider contracts.
That was the idea.
How many provider contracts do you have?
I haven't done account recently, but it's going to be, again, this is going to take time and effort. I can require payment for our time and effort, even if you come to review the records. Getting the records for your review takes time from personnel to assemble all of that. And get it, put it in a place where it's secure. Allow you to come in, monitor what you're doing while you're there. Going to charge for that time as well. So, yeah, if you want all provider records and then all these service contracts, we're talking about a couple, you know, standing file like that one sets a file drawer. And, and, and I will repeat, I will repeat, under the law, we're allowed to say that's burdensome and refuse to comply. Because I think this is an ill-defined request. It borders on being burdensome, if not absolutely intrusive.
Okay, I call for the vote, I call for the vote. I think the discussion can cease. I think the discussion can cease on the rescinding of the original cora request. Those in favor to rescind, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I move to appoint the Lincoln County Commission Chairperson to inspect records at the hospital on behalf of the board.
Is that it?
No, I'm...
I'm ready.
Beginning, beginning with provider contracts to be specified by the chairperson individually to the hospital administrator. I will call for a second on that motion and then, and I will discuss.
I will second the motion.
Okay, so I'd like to clarify, what I'm trying to do is appoint myself to be able to inspect these documents. Any of the ones that the board has already given permission because those are open records. So that includes provider contracts. And the things that, the other things we wanted to see were the write-off records to see what kind of numbers we're dealing with with the yearly write-offs. And we had only requested two years prior. So what I would like to do is I will just start with the provider contracts. I'll make it simple. I'll request one at a time. I happen to know that Mr. Granzo's response to the provider contracts for the clinic, I can start there. It shouldn't take any time for him to pull out something he's already done for the last person who inspected them.
And who would that have been?
Who? For, it would be your doctor's CHMA.
No, who had already inspected them?
You have already responded to a cora request for those contracts to the, to a public person, to a citizen. So the clarification is the board nor any individual has access to information that is protected under the HIPAA. And I do not intend to try to see anyone's personal information. I could care less about someone's social security number. I would like to see the terms of the contract with the hospital as far as the rate of pay and the length of contract and the details therein. And I will start with one, I will start with one set of contracts which are for the clinics and the providers of the clinics. And after that one is inspected and I bring it to the board, I will request another one. I believe if the commission would like to pursue seeing the write-offs, that would probably be necessary to get printed out and we could pay for that information. It would be helpful for us to see the trend in the hospital for the, the percentage of the write-offs. So I probably will not request to be inspecting the write-offs personally. I'd rather that be presented to the commission in a filed form, which we can request to a later date. So I will call for a vote on my ability to inspect, starting with the, um, contracts. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Granzo, I will email you my official response from that same email that you were receiving from the commission that says that today the board rescinded the, the motion to the original cora and that I've been appointed to inspect in person. And I will start, just so you're aware now, I will start with requesting the contracts for the providers of the clinic and then go from there on the other, um, providers.
Okay, you had other, was that your?
Well, I, I also wanted to mention that at our last Board of Trustees meeting, we discussed the hospital's finances. There's been some misinformation about that out on the internet, contrary to what's been written out. We are able to make payroll. And so I think that's something that I wanted to share publicly because it's been publicized by a member of this commission that we would not make payroll. And I would like to put the lie to that. And that, uh, it's that kind of misinformation out in the public that does a great disservice, not only to this county and our hospital, but the entire community. We just don't need that kind of, uh, thing being bandied about. Are we trying to manage our, uh, financial sys- situation aggressively? Yes, but we are able to make payroll. And it was explicitly said that we wouldn't be making payroll because my people started getting phone calls on it from the public in this county. And I think that's the kind of thing that does not contribute to comedy between the people.
Mr. Granzo, I have a question for you.
Thank you very much. I will expect your email shortly, and I will respond to it accordingly.
Mr. Granzo has left the table.
Okay.
What's our next item on the agenda?
Can I make a comment? Yes, go ahead. Randy, you've made comments several times at board meeting about our contract nursing. And then I had a thought over the last weekend or so that maybe the commission could set up a scholarship for nursing. Take it out of the Wind Tower Fund and, and, uh, help out with our nursing situation. I think that's a viable option. And also I think a, a scholarship, if you would, maybe give one to North Central Kansas Voc Tech for heavy equipment operators, since I haven't seen a motor greater operator since before harvest.
Mr. Sir-
Thank you.
Mr. Sir, I have a question.
What's that?
Um, where are we in the process for your board searching for a new replicity administrator for the hospital?
I'm glad you brought that up Alexis. We've interviewed four candidates and I don't think the people in this county realize what a bargain we got because the next administrator's gonna cost us twice as much money as what it's costing us now. Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have Mr. Metz on the agenda.
Right. He's here.
He's got a minute and a half.
I'll be, we'll be quick. Hello, you guys.
How you doing?
Greg.
You're doing fine.
There you go Randy.
Alexis.
Alexis, I've got a magazine and a rate sheet here for you today, so.
Thank you.
We are here on behalf of the Lincoln Area Chamber of Commerce um, to essentially inquire of the county's interest in purchasing an ad in the Live Lincoln County Magazine. Uh, you have been a previous subscriber before. We're very excited about the new magazine. We've been working in conjunction with Economic Development. Um, it's a little bit of a different setup now.
Sorry, it's a phone and apparently I dropped it down.
Start talking money and she goes away.
I understand.
Oh, that's as low as it goes, sorry.
Are you still with us Alexis?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
What, the other phone went off and started buzzing. I mean, I didn't know we lost you or what.
I could, I could hear it.
Okay, go ahead Jim.
Sure, um, I was just, just saying that, uh, we're, we're working in conjunction with Economic Development on the magazine this year. In previous editions, it had been, um, 1660 Publishing who had done the ad sales. However, the chamber board has, has kind of taken upon that task, um, as a project for, for our own. And I think the county should be involved in this. It's the 150th year of the county next year. And this has been, I would say, one of the, one of the best accomplishments as far as putting out what Lincoln County has to offer, our citizens, our businesses, all our entities. I provided a rate sheet in there where you guys could look through that. And I, I didn't get this done on in advance, so I know you probably haven't had a chance to look through it. So, you know, you guys are, feel free to discuss any questions that come up. We have a soft deadline of sometime this month, but as far as the content, should you choose to do an ad, you'd work with Becky Rathman and Chris Heinzie in regards to what you'd want to have in, in your ad.
May I inter-
You may.
I believe last night we listed the different departments of the county and then the different employment opportunities for each department. Is that right?
I believe it was a fact, a factual, let me open 36. It was statistics, so Lincoln, Lincoln County did, you know, cost of living, median household income, things of that nature.
Maybe that was two, maybe that was two editions ago then. I believe I remember one we did with the jobs. So that must be two times ago.
There was, there was a blurb about jobs just to, just to go to the Live Lincoln County website to see available job opportunities. So it was a full page. Um, nice picture.
What is the cost for full page?
Uh, $985 if you're a, uh-
That's a two-page. Full page is $715.
Oh. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Uh, that, we're doing a 10% discount as well for chamber members, which the county is a chamber member.
So which one is the, uh, major advertiser?
You would have, you would have been, I believe, a major advertiser, so.
What's a feature advertiser?
That's two pages.
Oh, two.
Two pages would be feature and-
One page is $715 for a charter member, chamber member. $795 for a non-chamber member Alexis.
Okay. So I think two editions ago, we listed all the different departments in the county and then last time we must have just done that statistical breakdown. So we could think of something to put in there, something different.
Well, we got a week or two to give in content. I think what we probably ought to do is make a commitment. We want to do that.
Do we have time?
You've got time, absolutely.
We're just asking for a commitment today.
Yeah, we, we-
Now, does this come out once a year?
Once every two years.
Oh, two years.
The last one was, I think, March of 18, so yeah, the spring of 18. So this one would hopefully be out on print in the spring of 2020.
I move we take a page of ad at the, as a major advertiser, $715 and determine the content in the next week or 10 days.
That's fine, absolutely. Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to fund a one-page ad in the Live Lincoln County Magazine. Under discussion, I would like to know, does the commission have, um, do we have that much left in our budget, Dawn? That we could take it out of the commission budget, or do you know where we paid for that last time?
I don't know.
Probably just the advertising from the general fund.
I believe so, but I would have to research. And this computer doesn't give me that access, so.
Okay. Well, if we do have any leftover funds from the commission budget, we could pay for it out of that. Any further discussion?
Who determines the content here? Kelly or, uh?
We had to do it in concert with Kelly.
Ultimately ourselves?
Chris, Chris Heinzie.
Chris.
For your own ad. I mean, you, you-
Chris and Becky.
They'll have, they'll have ideas possibly, you know, you guys share within your ideas. But as far as the, the magazine content itself, that would be Economic Development and the writers that they've brought on to-
Yeah.
Help put together.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Run opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Sorry, it went over.
Brendan's here, uh, Alexis. We're a little behind, not too much.
He'll talk fast.
Are you ready for Brendan Alexis?
Sure, come on in.
Okay, come on up.
So there's a few items that were important. The excavator, we received it last Wednesday. Checked it out then today. I met with the salesman this morning to do the final inspection on it and everything good. It's a lot better shape than I was even expecting based off of the pictures there. The interior, there's no damage to the interior, which generally if you have an excavator and you have an operator that smokes in it, the seats burn because the ash hole's right in between their legs. No holes. The back of the house, there is a little fresh paint or newer paint from a few years ago on there. But it's not smashed in like you find on excavators. It's been very well cared for. It just hasn't been used. We've been working on it, greased everything up, checking all the oils and everything and moving it around there. It needs nothing.
It seems operated well, huh? Good.
Oh, yeah. It's, and it's half the price of a brand-new one.
Right, good.
They were hoping that, they thought last Wednesday was our end of month in order to get payment sent out. They were hoping that since the commission had approved the purchase of it, that they could issue a special payment mid-month or before that.
Well, I'm sure we paid it, didn't we, held it? Or was that Kenworth?
That was Kenworth's. Kenworth's we held. We didn't receive this till Wednesday.
Okay.
But I have the invoice here. It was the 83.5 because it includes that 90-day warranty we purchased for $1,000. And that, the reason it was late was they were redoing the boom cylinder, repacking the boom cylinders and clearing an engine code. Boom cylinders, you repack every three to five thousand hours generally. And that has 3,000-hour knots. The fact that they repacked them before sending it out to us was a big positive in my book that-
Yeah.
It wasn't something they were hoping to get away.
Yeah.
We moved it around. I made sure to spin the turret all the way around to see if I could hear anything. Nothing. I checked on it over this weekend when the temperature got cold to see if any, there was any oil spots anywhere on it. There was nothing. And it's been well cared for because the salesman said they didn't clean it or anything and there's no oil spots inside anywhere on it.
So we got lucky. No, and that needs maintenance and service. Who does that? The boy out there?
I, boy could do some of it.
Where would you take it to?
We wouldn't take it anywhere.
You would do, you could do yourself.
We can do a lot of it ourselves, the major things.
Okay.
Van Keppel, the Volvo dealer, we would either take. If it's something we could take off to bring to them, we would do that and take off.
Hopefully we won't have that. I'm just curious if in the future, okay.
Or they would send a technician out to work on it if it was a major issue. But looking at the shape of the machine and how it operated, I don't foresee any major issues. It's just, it hasn't been used.
No problems, unexpected problems loading and taking it off of our equipment?
No. And the tracks, all the idlers moved, tracks were in good shape, the teeth on the sprockets were good. It's-
Yeah, are you gonna go into some, uh, procedure to train, uh, some individuals in the hardware department to operate it?
Yep.
Yeah, and, all everybody or only a certain few or?
We're gonna start out with just the bridge crew, the people that will be using it.
Bridge crew people, yeah, okay.
Because that, that would, it's basically for the bridge crew for putting in culverts, bridges, things like that.
All right.
The wheeled one would be for the tree trimming that we would do.
What other attachments have you got besides the 42-inch bucket?
It has a hydraulic thumb on there already plumbed in that works. We're gonna be looking into, measuring the pin size. It matches up with our John Deere.
Yeah.
I have to see if the placement's the same. Cause then we can utilize some of the equipment from the John Deere. If not, we'll get what you call a manual quick coupler machined. And then you can reuse, we'll reuse all of our John Deere attachments on this. But I haven't had a chance to do measurements other than pin size which were correct.
Have we got the stuff you need to do pilings right now or?
The piling was an addition, additional piece.
You'd have to get a-
But this has the hydraulics plumbed for it.
Yeah, so, but we'll have to get the piling driver thing actually. What do those things cost?
Really, it depends. I can't give you a number offhand right-
Cause I think that was one of the selling points that we had our own excavator. We could put the piling in for the regions.
We could do a lot of our own bridge stuff.
Correct.
You probably ought to look at that and see what that's gonna cost.
And I have, I mean, it, it depends on whether you're new or used for them.
Yeah.
And the size you need. Basically, we had to find the excavator first before you can size the pilot driver.
We're no hurry to do that. Maybe we ought to get used to this first and use it a while and then get it comfortable with it.
And the controls, it has both backhoe and excavator controls. It's not like the John Deere where you have to reroute hoses. It is you open the side door of the cab and you move a switch over.
Okay, good.
So.
Alexis, uh-
Which either way they're comfortable with, as long as they're comfortable. I don't want to put someone in there that only knows backhoe. They can learn excavator, that's fine. I want, I'd like them to be learned that too. But when they're doing their work, I don't care what mode they're in. I want them to be safe. Cause if something goes wrong-
Yeah, well, always be safe.
They'll go, they'll go back to their, what they're used to and if it's a different one.
A big open field out there where you can't handle anything.
That's part of the training program you got, so that's not really an issue.
Alexis, we have, Brendan gave me the bill from Van Keppel for eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Do we want to, I know we authorized it already, should I, you want me to initial it, to sign, say to pay it or?
What he's asking you to do is pay it at mid-month, because I'm not authorized to release any checks at mid-month, but utility bills and fuel, so.
So not do it, don't do it today.
So you guys need to tell me if it's okay to pay it mid-month or not.
They're hoping to get it in by the end of the month so they can pay out, they purchased it from them.
Mid-month would be like next week, really.
It'd be normally around the tenth or the fifteenth. Yeah, between the tenth and fifteenth, we have a bill that has to be in to Texas.
You have that in your budget?
Yeah.
Alexis, go ahead Alexis, I'm sorry.
What line item?
It'd be the capital expenditure.
Okay. I think the board can just give approval for Dawn to send a check, we've already approved the purchase, so.
Right, mid-month is fine with me.
Good, go.
Do you want us to sign this, to initial it? You want that back, there you go.
Is there any opposition?
No.
Okay, then we're good.
And then I spoke with the salesman today, he is having extra keys, because we only have the one key shipped to us and the owner's operator manual and service manual printed off and sent to us as well. So we'll have everything that, all but, excavators and excavators, just sometimes they have different samples for different things. So that way we know what we're doing and not just playing any buttons. And then I went to IBT when we went and picked up our truck from Kenworth last Wednesday to get bearing quotes for the grid roller, the big one that has been sitting outside my office window, I guess for a couple of years before I got there. We had brought it in, got it to work, and when we put oil inside the cylinder, it leaked right back out, that means it's got bad bearings and bad seals. This was a quote from IBT, total of about thirty-four hundred, he left sales tax on there accidentally, but it was about thirty-five hundred for three bearings and three seals and then the races, which is for a four-inch bearing. Generally, by private practice, I've always seen them for seven to eight hundred was a fair price for them and that's what this is. And we may have, yeah, we may have, may get a further discount on there, because that was just the basic plain price because our account has been suspended with IBT because we didn't use it. So we may get a further discount. The shafts, I haven't brought my archometer out and scales to fully check them, just from eyeballing it, they look fine, but I'd like to bring my machine shop tools in there to measure the shafts.
Have you checked with any other companies or are they about to?
No one carries them.
Nobody, huh?
The place they normally get for bearings, doesn't carry those, that size, it's four-inch bearings.
So they're about the only place to do it?
They're the only place here that you would go to, I mean, I, when I looked at McMaster Car to purchase four-inch bearings that were similar, they were sixteen to seventeen hundred dollars.
Okay. So a bit so.
IBT is an industrial technology, belt and technology, it's where you purchase belts, bearings, your boxes for heavy equipment, that's who you generally go through for all this type of machinery.
Okay.
We didn't purchase it, I wanted to talk, I wanted to see if the commission wanted me to go forward with checking the shaft sizes to make sure they work, this is our bigger grid roller, so it's more, the one we're currently using is smaller, so it doesn't cover as much path, the paths, this one is bigger.
Is this just for parts here?
That was just the parts.
We didn't do the labor ourselves?
Yeah, we've already disassembled it ourselves, we were able to reuse one bearing and seal. The other ones were bad, locked up, were broken.
And that's about seven hundred eighty-five bucks for a bearing.
Well, a four-inch roller bearing, the shaft is four inches, so the bearing is a foot.
I know, I bought combine bearings for big ones and I know what they cost.
Yeah.
This is a lot bigger yet, okay, no, I have no problem. Alexis, do you have any question about this, it's for thirty-seven hundred bearings basically?
Thirty-four, because there's tax on there and I'll talk with them to see if they apply all government discounts that they can to that price.
Thirty-four hundred, do you have any questions?
No.
I don't either, I think we should go ahead, sounds good, you want me to initial this or just approve it or what?
We, I still have to talk to them and I want to measure shafts first before...
You're not ready yet.
No, I'm just to let you know that we are working on it.
Yeah, we want that grid roller working because that's...
We agree in principle, how's that?
Okay.
We want that grid roller working because that really helps pack things down.
Yeah, and it's not like you can buy them anymore?
Probably not, that thing's probably...
It's a nineteen fifty-four or nineteen fifty-seven.
It looks like, it's old, okay.
You can't purchase them anymore? What you end up having to buy is a piece of equipment that has that as the front wheel of it. So it's, we could spend five to ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars making everything brand-new on it, I don't think we need that. We spend about five thousand dollars and put our own labor into it. Maybe we'd have a machine that would cost us two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
No.
Not if we can avoid it.
About the only thing we're short on is the bearings.
That's it, bearings and seals, the grids you rebuild up in the winter time when you're not using it, you just keep welding on the grids and that's, they're worth their weight in gold, because they're very heavy and they're not common to find.
And that's what we need our roads, packed down well because...
Yes, and it breaks the rock.
In the past, we've had this gravel put on and not be packed very well, and then it turns to a mess when it's raining and what, this will help.
It breaks up the clods and it breaks up the oversized rock that are in there.
Okay, good. Anything else?
The other thing, I didn't know if any of our departments needed this, it was the K-CAM Risk Avoidance Grant Program application. So for like vehicle grill guards, push bumpers, signs for equipment to stay back, backup cameras, I didn't know if any of our other departments were needing things like this. It's a two thousand dollar grant for twenty nineteen that we haven't used yet.
Well, the fire and ambulance folks all have that stuff on there and the sheriff's got it on there. I don't know that the rest of them have any need for, I don't know that they'd ever be backing up in crowds.
Do you have any need, you think, at our department for that?
I think we could get backup cameras for some of our equipment, I just didn't want to go using all of this if we had, commission had other ideas with our departments wanting to use some of the grant money.
I can't imagine that they would.
You saw that there was a short deadline, right?
Yeah, it's due December thirteenth.
And they're getting up to two thousand dollars grant money for us?
Yep.
And what do we have to?
Nothing.
Nothing, we would, well, we could get a grant, why not?
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that...
No other department is using it.
Okay.
And I was going to ask the sheriff if he wanted me to submit his, he got new cameras, but if you need it for somebody else.
If someone else has it, we can be without it, if it's not going to break or back, I just, if it's out there, I think the best interest for the county to use it for what we can.
I'd go ahead and use it. The other departments that need that kind of stuff already have it or can get their own.
Do we get another new grant next year?
Yes, it's two thousand dollars a year.
A year, huh, well, yeah.
Last year they bought the reflective coats, but they're not going to be able to buy clothing anymore because they consider that more of a work comp savings rather than an actual equipment savings, so.
Yeah, if you could use backup cameras or something.
That's what I thought, because a lot of our older equipment doesn't have cameras in them. That excavator does have a camera, you can switch to it, you can run all the time, so if you don't want to look at your engine RPM, you can see what's behind you at all times.
Okay.
That was a nice feature that it wasn't stock on that, that company that purchased it must have had it put in sick, special. Then the Spillman Creek, still waiting to hear back from them, they were gone for the holidays.
Wally or?
No, the engineer from the gas company.
Oh, engineer, okay.
He was gone for the holidays, so he hasn't gotten back yet, but if they can cover that...
Sensor line.
Covering it or what cost would be to move it?
Got you.
I forgot the pictures at the office, I had taken pictures for you, thought it hadn't moved more. That crack that we had originally shown you when I started is now three to four feet lower.
Well, I know that bridges, I know that bridges are safe, we obviously got to do something to fix that, you know. Just, I guess we decide on the road through Wally's land.
Wally is...
If we can get that...
You can go with any option you have, I told him it probably is going to be the middle option.
Yeah.
And he's perfectly happy with that.
Okay.
Hopefully we can limit the expense for the gas line stuff.
And that's why, once they give me their options, I'll put together cost options for our department so we can see what is the most cost-effective for us to bring to you.
Okay.
And I don't have anything that I can think of at the moment. Didn't know if anyone else, if there's anything you guys had for us.
Well, I noticed we had a little rain, so the roads are pretty sloppy, so...
Yep, they're out there on the roads, they were going to be working on fifty today, we got the rain.
Some guys are in my district are complaining they're not getting greater very often, so maybe you could address that, please.
You can have my grader, I don't want him out of my place anyway, nothing is to me, period.
In my district there, there's some people, and also on Apache Road, which is way, way down south on, we're just running, you know, right next to the Ellsworth Line, there's a complaint there that that hasn't been maintained very well.
Okay.
And to write off Highway fourteen going west.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Alexis, do you have anything for Brendan?
I have about that area, Union and then Fifty North from there.
Yep, it did track up, I've heard from all the moisture. So when the ground starts to freeze like it has, it doesn't absorb the water, moisture, so it kind of sits on road. It's generally something that happens this time of year and then springtime when everything starts thawing out and raining. They're on it now, that's who is going to be working on our fiftieth road project. I told them to hold off on that, we have the moisture, we need to fix the roads and get the roads plated.
Okay.
So they were headed up there to fix that. Told them to hold off, get the tires in, that, one of those graders was supposed to have tires put on today. We were waiting for valve stems, changed that to tomorrow so he could get out there and get the road fixed while the moisture's there.
Okay.
I actually was not home on Thanksgiving, but I got a few phone calls. Did they scrape the road coming into Sylvan at all when that flurry came or what happened that day?
On that day, I do not believe so.
Did it just sit and then melt or, I wasn't there.
It sat and melted, it wasn't very heavy through here and it was all gone by that evening and all kind of...
Forty-seven or eight degrees, it just went away.
Yeah, everything was wet, it was heavy wet snow, but...
The roads got pretty sloppy Alexis, because it was a slow rain and snow, so then it, and then right above freezing, so it's sloppy roads. Everywhere, everywhere is just the way it is.
And then we didn't work because Friday, correct, so it was Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yes.
Thursday, Friday, okay. Had you done any more thinking about scheduling or is your plan to just close everything on Friday or how is that going to work?
As of right now, with limited employees we have, if we go to a split shift like you've suggested, we would lose out of project time because there wouldn't be the personnel there two days of the week. We would have bodies there, but they wouldn't be able to complete projects. We're, it's best value for us just to stay together and then when there are issues on Fridays, like the Friday before, we went to four days a week when I was doing interviews, when we had that heavier snow the week before Thanksgiving. I had employees, they came out, they knew the roads needed to be hit, so they had come out. I had one gentleman here come in, Skid Steer to clean up areas in Lincoln that we get and then the outline shops had people come in in order to hit their roads. They, the ones that were here for an hour, hour and a half, it wasn't a heavy snow, but they knew it needed to be done, so they came in.
So I guess my question is, do you have intentions in the future, if you need to call people in on Friday, is that all going to be overtime then for the current week? Because if we do forty hours, um, anything over that in a particular week is overtime. We can't necessarily have them take off Monday of the following week.
And it's something we'll do case by case, whether it's overtime or comp time, like comparable to similar other counties that are on the four-day a week year-round. Realistically, we're not going to have, if we get snow on a Saturday, we get snow on a Saturday, it'd just be the same as if we were on a five-day week instead of a four-day week. I don't think it'll end up being as much or as often as some of, some might expect it to be, the call-ins to be overtime.
Have you ever considered doing a midday off so that everyone is still working all the same days like you're saying, but it's not a three-day weekend?
It's something we can discuss with the guys, I'll bring it up at our next meeting in the morning. I don't have a problem with, yeah.
Because I think we're going to get a lot of slack when there's a five-day weekend like we had with roads that could, I mean, I'm not saying we can even out on them, but if there's the chance that they need attention, then that's where the department's going to get a lot of negative feedback about a three-day weekend.
Yeah, well, like this past weekend, they couldn't get out because it was too wet, they would have just made more of a mess, it had to dry out.
Yeah, it has dried up.
And with as windy as it was Saturday and Sunday, it dried out enough where we could be on them today.
Okay.
It wouldn't have, my mind, my opinion, it wouldn't have done much good to have them out there on Saturday, because it would just made, they'd just be pushing slop from one side to the other side and not actually getting the material back where it needs to be.
I understand.
I think this is the only time where we have the two holidays back-to-back like this.
Well, Thanksgiving always has that four-day deal and then a lot of people take off, we have almost five days, so it's, yeah. And then, of course, Christmas between there and New Year's, you got a lot of time off, so.
I did remember one thing, the holiday time, I guess, I didn't know about it, we were just made aware of it. On, back in July, the commission voted that all holiday time has to be used by the twenty-fifth, I guess, of December.
All leave time.
All leave time, that has to be, has to be used up, anything over eighty. None of my employees knew that, so they're a little upset, but I've talked to them, is that something we're going to continue going year after year now, they have to use it by the twenty-fifth? Okay, that's what we were wondering, because one of my...
It has to do with the pay cycle.
Yeah, one of my employees, he always takes off the week of Christmas because he has family out of town that comes in and that's what he was saving it for, he didn't know that it had to be used up by the twenty-fifth until this past week, he said. So just for their information, I wanted to see if it's going to be continuing year after year, used by the twenty-fifth? Okay. Is there anything else?
I don't have anything, Alexis, anything?
I don't believe so.
I think I said that, thank you, thanks.
Do you need me back here later this afternoon?
I don't know if anything.
Okay, you had someone from my shift on the agenda this afternoon, I don't know if I need to...
Mr. Kruger's on the agenda at twelve fifteen, Alexis, would you like to have Brendan here also or not?
I just saw, I mean, I saw him on the agenda, obviously he had requested, I think we need to speak to him as a board and then Brendan, I will email you from the commission's email.
I think we'll speak with him individually.
No, I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I believe we have Mr. Tingsen here.
I'd like to take a couple minutes recess, please.
Secret meeting, we're going to have a secret meeting.
Dawn?
Yes.
As the active HR, do you have intentions to call an executive session for any employment health related issue, employee health issues?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I didn't think about getting on the agenda, but I guess...
Well, I was just wondering if we're going to kind of combine the session there or?
We probably need to talk ahead of time.
Okay, so Brendan, maybe you could stay for a minute?
Okay, I can do that. I'll use the restroom when they're done with their secret meeting.
I have eleven-thirty now, so we have eleven-thirty to twelve. Is this a proposal, Dawn?
I believe that one of the commissioners told Dave at the KAC conference to get on the agenda.
Okay, and is this the same person that did our specialty files when we moved the attorney back into the courthouse and moved stuff around the district court?
Yes, and if you remember, he provided a bid to replace our cameras here in the courthouse of last year.
Do you remember what that number was?
I don't remember. I think he provided it last year.
I was going to say, I don't even know if I have that.
It's been a while and we didn't, you guys chose not to do anything, but I think our equipment is like nearing the end of its life. Okay, he's saying it's passed. We won't be able to replace it if something fails, or we will be able to fix it.
These proposals that are sixty days old, this stuff moves too fast.
And I put him for a half an hour because he talks a lot. But he probably won't take that long, I wasn't sure, I thought maybe it might be more than fifteen minutes, but...
Dawn, did the courthouse decide on a provider for IT?
No, I think the others were trying to get some information from Next Tech and I don't know where they're at with that. I was doing payroll and stuff last... I was doing payroll and stuff last week, so I just didn't even ask.
Okay.
I can find out and let you know next week.
You can come up Mister Tang, what's your name, Tangman?
KAC and the phones and things like that.
Tagman.
Tagman? I think I've met you at the Wichita.
We, we, we met at KAC, yes, yes. You stopped by our booth.
Mister Gable will be here in a minute.
Sure, no problem.
Where are you based at?
Salina, right, Salina. Have been for, you know, through our history, we're fifty years. Best in master.
Sorry, I just shoved that all in my mouth. I don't like biting down on those things. It leaves a film on your teeth. But I realized how bad that looked right in front of everybody else. Apparently, yeah, you're right.
What lights are Mister?
Apparently I have a small mouth, so when I do that, it fills my cheeks and I think I have a big mouth, but that's okay.
Alexis, are you there?
Here.
We have now Mister Dave Tagman.
Tagman.
Tagman, Tagman, from FileSafe, uh, about courthouse security camera, uh, issues, so, uh, should we let you proceed here? Do you have any questions?
No, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Um, there's a copy of a packet for each of you. I've given Don the, kind of the master, uh, packet on the, basically this is a, um, a follow on from a conversation we had about a year ago. Your existing, uh, analog video surveillance system here in the courthouse is, uh, well, it's beyond end of life. Uh, actually, end of life on the recorder and certain equipment was about two years ago. And the thinking is, is while it's working, that's fine, but here's the challenge. If something breaks tomorrow, we cannot fix it. Uh, the parts, uh, in the old analog world are simply unavailable. What parts we do find are far more expensive than I believe reasonable. So, and the move is towards digital. Digital now dominates the video surveillance arena versus the old analog, uh, amount. So the proposal I provided, and I didn't think to send it digitally for Alexis, but, uh, anyway, it's for an upgrade to a digital replacing all cameras and recorder and associated equipment. Uh, I mean, we have some options. We could continue to use your digital cam, or your analog cameras and use a digitizer. But the reality is, is that in the years to come, as those cameras fail, we'll have to convert them to digital anyway. Uh, the, the trend is to move to digital, uh, when you do and move it all, you know, let's just do it all. Because in the long run, you're going to spend far more money if we come in, put in a recorder and a digitizer and then replace cameras later. And basically this is a one for one, uh, replacement of your existing cameras in the courthouse. And these are four megapixel cameras, which are five times the resolution of your current analog.
Now, uh, when this, is this recorded then on the, I see.
It's recorded on, right, it's a digital recorder.
I know, like the, uh, regular files, like on the software files that you would bring back up, you could.
Right.
You can record it and also on the internet, whether it be on the internet.
We can make it available on the internet. It does take some, uh, uh, work with your IT provider, whoever handles your firewall. Uh, we would have to work with them, but yes, you can extend this outside.
Not that we would need that necessarily if it's local. Just, you're just talking courthouse, you're right.
Just in the courthouse, we can make it available to, uh, whoever you tell us to make it available to. Uh, we can install a client, uh, software and or we can make a web browser access available to them.
Which is what the sheriff's office currently has, right?
Right, now the sheriff's office has access to the system, so yes, we would actually have to set that up. I, I forgot. But that's how they monitor your cameras here in the courthouse is via a link over the internet from your system to their system, uh, so they can again, uh, monitor. So if a panic alarm is activated, they're able to see what's going on in the courthouse, uh, before they send an officer or as they send an officer over.
And this bid you have would include that for the.
We would include setting that up to the sheriff's.
For the sheriff's office, so if something happened here, they could monitor.
Right, we would reset up. It would, it would require new software at the sheriff's office, but yes, we would include that in this.
It also includes like alarm systems for these, every office in here?
Well, that's separate apart from this. The panic alarm and the video are two separate systems.
Would you provide, could you provide that too?
We did. You have a panic alarm.
You did that before, okay. So like Don's office has something like that and then treasurers have that and.
Right.
And the county clerk, or county attorney now.
Yeah, county attorney has one, uh, the courts have one. Basically all the departments in the courthouse have panic alarms. I didn't bring that file with me, so I can't give you the exact.
And then that goes notified to the sheriff's.
That notifies dispatch over in the sheriff's office and then they can send an officer in response, uh, to that. And then at the same time, the dispatcher has the ability to see, you know, so if it's like the court office, he's able to see what's going on up there before an officer arrives.
If you would upgrade to this new bid price, would, that wouldn't include that stuff though, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it would, oh, the alarm system?
Well, the alarms are separate, but it's, it's already working. There's really no changes we need to make to it.
That wouldn't be extra, uh, extra expense.
No, it's already in place.
Okay.
Other than any routine maintenance, uh, you know, eventually we'll need to replace some batteries. Uh, the little, uh, button units have a battery in them. After, you know, three to five years, those batteries will have to be replaced.
Who does the terms and conditions work?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we currently have a maintenance contract with you?
Uh, no, we do not have a maintenance contract on either the alarm or the, uh, video system.
But your company installed them?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
The video was done in two thousand and nine, so that system is at ten years of age.
Ten years ago.
Yeah.
This current bid Alexis is eleven thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars for, uh.
And I snapped you a picture of it if you want to look at your.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
And that is, um, just the, the upfront purchase. Is there a maintenance agreement?
There's one available. We will offer it to you once the installation is completed. Uh, I frankly don't have that price because it's all based on what the final installed configuration is.
Is that like a yearly?
It's an annual, yes, yeah. That covers all labor, uh, travel, uh, training, et cetera. The only thing we don't cover is, is the actual cameras. Uh, the recorder's covered, the cameras are not, but they're under warranty for the first three years anyway.
Okay.
Is this expandable that if somebody wanted to add an additional?
Yes, we can add additional cameras. Right now I have it licensed for sixteen cameras and currently you have ten. So we would be able to add six more cameras without further licensing requirements.
Okay, so you have sixteen built into the installation price?
Right, right.
Then you have additional options on the proposal on the back if we want to add it, okay.
So for example, if you want to add a camera here in the commission room, then what you would do is add the, I believe, four hundred and twenty-five dollars for the dome style camera, uh, to the system. You can add up to five, uh, six additional cameras without additional licensing requirements.
Do you have the option to do any filming capabilities for recording that would, could be, um, detached from the unit? As far as in one particular, like if you were to put a camera in the commission room, could there be a recording?
Yes.
Just that?
We can program in the, uh, software by camera. We could send the video from the commission meeting, uh, to another storage location, but keep in mind that in the surveillance world, we're not designed for live monitoring or more for documentation and, uh, archiving of video.
I guess I just meant, is there some sort of capacity to tie into just that one camera? Because we only use the commission room basically once a week. We wouldn't really need constant surveillance. I guess if all on, they're all on, so it doesn't matter, but.
Well, actually, I, I, I should step back. If we're talking about a particular camera, it does support multiple streams. We could set it up so that it would be accessible via the H dot two sixty-four, uh, protocol for video. It would take some, I'd have to sit down and look at some particulars, but I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to stream video out to other sources.
Mona, you got questions?
Yeah, I, I would be cautious about that though, because when you go into executive session, how are you going to turn the camera off? Because that video would probably still be considered, um, public.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point. I was just wondering about that because I had re, I had researched about some recording devices and it seems like a lot of what's out there on the market is just for live streaming and it doesn't necessarily have a detachable storage space that does a, a chip or anything like that, so.
Yeah, the other challenge you're running.
We're being recorded now for, and they put this on.
Yeah, the other challenge would be is that the camera that's quoted in the options do not have microphones. I would have to step up to a slightly more expensive camera that has a built in microphone if you want the full audio video, uh, uh, solution on that.
I don't know if we would want to get into that Alexis for recording our commission meetings.
Yeah, let me restate the example. If you want to add another camera like in the appraiser's office or any other office, then yes, you could add an additional camera, uh, to the system up to sixteen total.
Where's the currently the hardware at in that room just?
It sits in that IT room in the north.
IT room north of Don's office, huh? Okay.
Are these all, have some form of microphone or none at all?
Uh, none at all.
Okay.
Who does the terms and conditions installation?
Okay, as far as the, now, thank you. The only thing that is not included in this would be any cable installation. And, uh, I'll be honest, I meant to stop in on my way in this morning. I don't remember if this is coaxial or, uh, a cat five cable. If it's cat five, then there really is no cabling required. If it's coaxial, we would have to have new cabling installed in the building, uh, to replace that. And we do not install cable.
It's cat five.
It is cat five?
Yes, but I think that we, the reason why I asked about an additional camera was that I'm thinking maybe we might need something on the county attorney's office.
That might not do.
It kind of debated and, and I think district court was kind of maybe wanting something more, but.
Okay. Any additional cameras? Don just, uh, informed me that we are, uh, cat five on the cabling, so we would not require any cabling if we were replacing existing camera for existing, you know, putting new cameras in the existing locations. Cabling's already in place, so we wouldn't need to do that. But if you add any additional cabling or any additional cameras, then there would be some cabling required prior to us installing.
So Eagle does that or it's Eagle's cable?
Uh, we've had Next Tech do it before. I, I'm assuming, I don't know if Eagle can or not. I'm assuming Wilson Communications can.
Do you have to do cabling? There's no wireless type of setup?
Uh, we do not, uh, we do not recommend wireless for surveillance equipment.
Because you could drop out or lose.
Somebody puts a new wireless router over here and it, it conflicts with us.
It could interfere, it could interfere with signal or something.
Right, we want, we kind of approach things from a set and forget. In other words, we'll set it up so that it works.
Yeah, well, hardline cabling.
So this twelve thousand's not done because we got to do all the rest of the stuff under terms and conditions somewhere else, so it's going to be several thousand more dollars.
But, uh, again, if you do this, then you have, no, the, the cabling is not a requirement because it's already done.
But if we change up cameras in, one for one that we currently have, there is no additional cost if we add a camera. Because we have the court, which we, which originally we had increased because we don't have any cameras outside of the building and there was a discussion about adding it, but we weren't sure how to do internet and the yada yada. And so the commissioner just said, let's go ahead and get the higher license and then we can add as we go.
Yeah, so if you want to add cameras like on the front entrance around the building, then you would go with the optional bullet style camera. And those run four seventy-five and we could do, you know, those exterior cameras and add them in with no additional licensing. But yes, we would have to have a cable run installed for those.
What's the license for software to run that extra camera?
We're, we're in the software world, so.
Can't you have licensing like, like Microsoft?
Exactly, exactly. The software vendor for this particular recording system has a device license that's required.
Sure, for each, for each one, okay.
Right. I designed this around sixteen. You currently have a sixteen port system, so that's why I designed this with sixteen camera ports already built in.
Okay.
So you have the same options today that you do, you know, on the new.
My question is, how many monitor systems does that, does this bid here include?
Well, we can do quite a few, but, uh, we do include the installation of two client stations in the contract. Uh, but we can put it on every workstation in the courthouse. There would be some additional labor charge to do that.
What does that mean on each workstation?
Well, like say if you wanted Don and each of the, the elected officials to have access to the video, we can install software on their workstation that would allow them to access the digital.
Oh, I see.
The recording camera.
That's a good idea because our, our primary concern recently had been how do you secure the upstairs where they're going to be holding hearings and such, um, without having an actual physical obstruction? Because you know, we, we don't have a metal detector or we do have someone there during the hearings, but as far as the offices are concerned upstairs, maybe they should have access at least to the cameras in the hallway for themselves seeing who comes up the steps or into the elevator.
And we could set it up so like the officer that's monitoring the court level would have a screen and he would be able to monitor, you know, the entrances and the activity.
The county attorney's office.
County attorney's office.
So they can see what's going on.
Well, I know district court had asked too, because she, you know, if it's after four thirty and she hears somebody coming up the steps, she wants to be able to see who it is.
Uh huh.
Because her door is shut and, and she has that tinted window, so you, or you can't, or obscured windows, so you can't see out.
And there is a camera on the main level that has that stairwell in view. It would be a, uh, it would just be a configuration. There's also a web, uh, server built into the recorder, so we don't need to install client software. What they could do is just open a, a web browser and log into the browser function and bring that video across.
Right, on the internet.
But it's, it's live video only. It doesn't give them management access, but quite frankly, I don't think we want everybody to have management access to the system because I want to keep control of the system mainly through Don so that it does exactly what the commission intends for it to do without people changing things without her knowledge. So we like that central.
Yeah, we need to limit access.
Right, we need to limit access.
To maintain control.
Yeah, because I'm going to click the camera off. I mean, yeah, we're going to show the video, but if we're not recording it, you can't go back and look at it.
Okay.
I do think it'd be appropriate for the clerk to have that control because that is the designated open records officer and there's a lot of responsibility that goes along with that, so I think it's appropriate for the control panel to be in that office.
And, and Don has control today, so we would not change that. It would be different software, different, you know, we've been trainer on the newer software and stuff, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea though to have especially upstairs, you know, some capability that they have access to the cameras that lead to the upstairs entrances.
Yeah, and then I will point out that this is the same software system that we have next door at the SO sheriff's office, so.
So we'd be compatible that way?
Right, compatibility, familiarity, uh, cross platform compatibility.
Make it more of that, problems.
Exactly, exactly.
Hardware and software.
Yeah, interchangeable ability. Again, once somebody learns it, they know both systems. Uh, it would make it easier for the SO's office because, uh, they would be able to understand the system here is the one, because they already know the one they have.
If we would agree to something like this, Don or Alexis, what budget would we take that out of?
When we did this before, we took it out of Fund Twenty-Six, which is the capital improvement fund. You know, probably for this dollar amount, we probably have enough money left in county general to pay for it, but.
Well, whatever's left in county general, we can put into the capital improvement, correct?
Correct.
So I think it might be prudent to, to pay for something like this out of the capital improvement. That way it's, it's a shared expense out of a separate fund. And it can be tracked that way. I do think the commission needs to do their due diligence and get a, a second bid. We can work with this proposal, of course, but I think we should definitely make sure we have a comparison.
Okay, any other questions?
Good for me.
Okay, I thank you for your time this morning.
Yes, sir, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We got a couple minutes before Kelly comes in.
Yes, so do you guys want to visit an executive session for a moment? Yes, so do you guys want to visit an executive session for a moment about personnel issues?
I believe, yes, that is very necessary. We have Ms. Larson here at noon, so we have about ten minutes, but we just go ahead and take that ten minutes. Is that enough time?
Yes.
Okay, I move to recess into executive session for ten minutes for the purpose of discussing health issues. For employee privacy pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen to be number one, personnel matters of non-elected personnel to reconvene in the commission room with acting HR clerk, Dawn Harlow, the board of county commissioners, and that's all.
All right, second. Don't sit down.
Yes, I move second for a ten-minute executive session. Any further questions?
To reconvene in the courthouse room?
Yes.
When, when color is, otherwise that's all I got.
Okay, those in favor vote aye.
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 Because there's not an employee, even though he has a cert notification.
Next crucifixee.
Come on up, Kelly.
About me?
You're up. Kelly's here, Alexis.
Okay.
I guess we're ready for it, right?
Yes.
Okay, Kelly.
Um, this is just informational purposes only, so I'm not asking for any, uh, decision or, or anything like that. This is, I'm, I'm just kind of wanting to give you an up, FYI. So, um, I think the, well, I think we all know we've got a pro- a problem with dilapidated properties in our communities, uh, whether that's downtown buildings, whether that's houses, um, whatnot. And, um, here the last couple months, I know Sylvan and Lincoln especially have been dealing with, um, some dilapidated property issues. And, um, for a while now, I've been kind of keeping my eyes and ears open for other communities and, and what ways that they are going about trying to tackle some of the problems, because it gets pretty complicated, um, in terms of ownership issues or back tax issues or condition issues or who knows what. So anyway, for a while now, I've been, um, paying attention to, um, a tool that cities, more and more cities seem to be utilizing for, called land banks. And, um, and then there's also a vacant property registration ordinances. And so as I've been listening to the city of Lincoln, um, in their meetings here the last couple of months, and talking to Jennifer over in Sylvan and Barb and Bev- and Barnard, um, I just, I would, I guess I feel like it's time that we talk about, um, a more proactive approach to dealing with these problems, because it's not gonna get any better. Um, you know, some of these buildings are to the point where, um, some are probably to the point that there is nothing more you can do with them. Others are, I feel like, are probably to the point that if we don't at least start doing something now, that it's only gonna get worse to a point where we're not, you know, there's nothing gonna be able to do with them later on either. So, um, I am organizing a, a presentation, an informational presentation, next week on Wednesday, uh, December eleventh at seven PM here in the, the Finch Theater, um, and have invited, um, the community development director in Lyons to present on land banks.
What day, what time again?
It's Wednesday, next Wednesday, the eleventh, at seven PM.
Okay.
Um, and she's just gonna talk about their land bank problem, uh, or, or program, and how they're utilizing it to, to deal with, um, some of their dilapidated properties. Um, and I think it's just good information. I, I guess from my perspective, um, I would, I'm inviting all the city council members and, and basically anybody from the public is willing to come, but, you know, I'm thinking from the attorneys, the city attorneys especially, um, but, uh, you know, um, the, from the county treasurer and appraiser to property owners who are adjacent to this, um, to all city staff. Um, and I guess I wanted, I'm, uh, why I'm here as well as to invite you guys, um, just again as informational, um, to understand what some of these programs are, ask questions. There really is no easy way to deal with this stuff, um, but we have to try. And so, um, I guess I just see this, uh, especially the land bank, um, as a tool that we could potentially use. So I'm just trying to get as many people informed about it as possible. I'll probably be sending out an email, um, hopefully later today. Um, I've kind of sent out a few little blasts to some, um, people beforehand as kind of, I'm, this is something I'm working on, so kind of get a little bit on your radar, but I guess today I just kind of wanted to come and, and personally invite you to the meeting to, if you're able to come, just sit here. Yeah.
So we have this tax sale being prepared. Do you have a list, a cumulative list of these properties that may be on that sale in particular?
Um, yes, uh, probably six months or so ago, I, I asked for the list, um, and I believe that they are the ones that are going to be on the, the tax foreclosure sale. Um, I don't believe that's been scheduled yet, is what I've heard. So I'm, I've, I've kind of been paying attention to what's been going on there, um, and, and I don't really know how best all of this could dovetail together. I guess that my point with the presentation is, um, to have everybody come, listen to what this, this program is, ask a lot of questions, find information, and then each of the city councils can kind of go back to their meetings and say, is this something that we want to continue pursuing or not? Because there's, there's a lot of work here, um, you know, and there, there's a lot of complexity to it. Um, but I just, I, I kind of want to get as many people with a general knowledge as, as possible. And then however this moves forward, whether it works in collaboration with the tax for- foreclosure sale, or if maybe the timing isn't gonna be quite right, where it, it doesn't work this time around, but maybe, um, in a year or two, it, it might work better.
I'm only asking that because it's my understanding that the county ends up being the property owner if that tax sale, if they're, I mean, I believe we can accept a minimum bid, and if that's not met, then we retain the ownership of the property, is my understanding.
And, and I am not gonna be a claim, claim to be an expert on it, but I don't think that's the case. What, what happens is whatever municipality, so it could be the city of Lincoln, it could be the city of Sylvan, it could be the county commission, creates a land bank authority, and that authority could be either the, that municipal body, or it can be another body that's designated as the land bank authority. And that then becomes the owner of the property. So if it is the county, then yes, it probably would be county property.
Okay, I was only referring specifically to the tax sale.
Oh.
I'm ignorant about the land bank process. I'm just specifically referring to if the tax sale goes through, I believe we can set a minimum bid. If that is not met, to transfer ownership to someone else, then the county becomes the owner of the prop- of the property.
And, yeah, that might be the case. I, I'm not, I'm not gonna claim to be an expert on, on that either, but that could be the case.
I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that when we go to this land bank presentat- presentation, then we potentially in the future may be owning several of these properties as the county, is what I'm saying.
Potentially, yeah, yeah. Um, but the, to me, the, the, the thing that I, I guess, like the most about land banks is it gives, it, there's some special powers that come along with land banks, but to me, it gives us local control of these properties. So, you know, what I fear is, let's say there's a tax foreclosure sale, property goes up, somebody makes whatever the minimum bid is, um, and all they're gonna do is say, hey, I just got myself a super cheap storage building, you know, that I can probably squeeze five to ten more years of life of this thing, and they have no intentions of doing anything. So we can't ever get ahead of this, um, in that way. So the, to me, the, the appeal to a land bank is that we can finally get some local control of these problem properties and, and kind of eliminate as many of the obstacles for why they've been a problem property and, and somehow get a plan together for how we're gonna put it back into productive use. So that's what I, that's what the purpose of a land bank is, to kind of, to get control and put these properties back into productive use, instead of kind of these chronic problems, which is what I fear. I mean, what, what has happened and, and what will continue to happen if, if there isn't something put in place to start to change that dynamic.
A few years ago, we had a program here in Lincoln, that the volunteers would tear down a house, haul it out. I gave them the dirt and we filled the hole back in, and we were doing, uh, three or four years of that, three or four or five houses a year. And then the city withdrew our privileges for doing that, and I don't know what the legal ramifications were on how, who owned the house that we tore down, how we got to do it, what happened to the trash, but it looked to me like that was working pretty good. Why didn't we not continue that?
And that I don't know. I mean, I, I'm not sure.
I think a lot of it is finding volunteers to do it.
I think the volunteers, but I also think there were some property owners who, if I were to guess, they didn't want to relinquish control of the property or they didn't want to, they didn't want to do anything.
I understand, but there's plenty of them. I like, I remember Danny's number, there are seventy-two houses here in Lincoln that are dilapidated and not habitable right now.
I would not be surprised by that.
So, you know, we took four or five a year. It might take a while, but at least we're knocking some down, getting rid of them until somebody else comes to the land bank plan or something else.
And, and I don't, I don't disagree that that's a bad idea. I mean, I, I think in order to come at this, we've got to come at it with as many different ways as possible. So, you know, it'd be nice if we can kind of continue doing some of that, but I feel like that's not gonna solve all the problems either. If we have another tool in place that can kind of help some of these things too.
Getting rid of that took some of our problems out of here.
Yeah, um, and, and I think that did a good job.
May I ask you to find something out for the commission then? Could you possibly find out what kind of control we have over setting that minimum bid? Because that is really going to ultimately produce the results as to whether or not the county ends up being the owner of, of any said property on the, on the sale that then qualifies also as a dilapidated structure.
Yeah, yeah, I can look more into that.
Thank you.
There's, as far as my understanding with land banks, there's three ways that you can, uh, get control of the property. One is through the tax foreclosure sale, basically saying, instead of putting it out there for sale, we're just automatically gonna roll this into the land bank.
Okay.
Um, the other way is property can be donated to the land bank. Um, and then the third way is the land bank can actually purchase property too. Um, I know in some cases, um, in other communities, the land bank, if there was a key property, uh, somewhere that they just needed, they felt it, it's an economic priority to get control of the property, to do something with it, then they can purchase it. Although that's not what I probably see as being our immediate need. I, I see kind of concentrating e- either on the tax foreclosure properties first up, if, if that process works together, um, or working with property owners to, to donate the property so that they can not have to deal with it. Um, you know, the pressures that are going to be coming, um, from the city councils and so forth to get control.
I understand that one of the big problems right now is the landowner, uh, has an inflated sense of value of his property, particularly if he knows that, that there may be an opportunity to sell that to a land bank. There are a number of buildings on Main Street of Lincoln that probably should be torn down, but they can't because the property owner has such a high price established as what he thinks it's worth.
Well, I think there's, I think there, every building, there's a, kind of a different dynamic about what's going on there. Um, with the three here in Lincoln, I would say that one of them does have a very much inflated price. Um, I've talked to him though, that I, I would like to think he's beginning to see some reason, but I'm not gonna swear on that. So another, one of, another of the properties, the owner cannot be found. Um, so, you know, there's an issue there, so.
Well, I appreciate your information. I'll be at your meeting.
Yeah, so that's all I just wanted to let you know about. Like I said, I'm gonna be sending out, um, an email, um, through the economic, um, our email blast to try and get it out to the public. I'll put it on Facebook. So it is a public meeting. Um, I guess I would, I don't know if, if all of three or two of you are gonna be there, um, if it needs to be a, a public notice for a meeting, because I want to make sure that all-
Was this at the Finch?
Yes, at the Finch, because I want to make sure that you guys have the ability to ask questions. Um, that will be key to anything is, is, I mean, the whole purpose of this is to ask questions collectively, because the last thing I want to do is go around to every single board and, you know, have the same conversation four different times, so.
Send a note to Carly.
Trigger for a public meeting for the commission unless we're actually discussing county business.
Okay.
Or acting county business. So we could all attend and ask questions relative to the subject, and it doesn't necessarily trigger an open meeting for us, so I think we'll be fine.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that, because I wasn't sure.
Some of this would, you need some action from the commission then, to do something for you?
Well, at this point, I, I kind of feel, let's just see how, let's just have the meeting and let's just talk. And, and then I kind of feel like each, each council will have an idea of how they want to move forward or not. Like I said, this is a lot of work. It, it is complicated, so, um, everyone, every council's gonna need to be comfortable with, with whatever happens. And, and I, I guess I kind of feel like the county needs to be aware of it and at some point a partner, whether it's because of the tax foreclosure sale or whatnot, so I want to make sure.
She was in charge of that stuff.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
She knew a lot of this stuff, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all I kind of wanted to-
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alexis, you have any questions, Alexis?
No, thank you.
All right, have a good one.
Thanks, lady. Gordon Kruger? Ready? Are we ready? Alexis for Gordon, are you?
Yes.
Okay.
Gotta get Dawn, Dawn back here.
Yeah. How are you doing? Did you, uh, survive your surgery?
I survived it and not doing too bad. Probably what happened, so.
You had the emergency, huh? Had an emergency type of situation?
Yeah, I cut, pretty much. Pretty much.
We, well, we should wait for Dawn.
Yeah, we, yeah, we will. But no, survived the surgery well.
Okay.
Everything went good. Just a matter of healing up now, so.
Maybe since waiting on Dawn, would we like to speak with Mr. Auding? Since he's-
Sarah was here a minute ago, maybe he's back outside.
I'm right here.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
He's right there.
You're hiding back there, aren't you?
I ain't hiding.
Yeah, back with the rear-
Ain't never knew me to hide, have you?
The rear row. You wanna, how long are you gonna be?
Well, I don't know.
He has a fifteen-minute time slot on the agenda. Mr. Kruger-
Well, Dawn's here.
Dawn's back, Alexis, so.
Okay.
We're waiting for you with Mr. Kruger here. Okay, do you have, uh, do you want something to say, or?
Yes, I do. Uh, I contacted Dawn the other day and sent her a copy. You did get the fax?
Yes.
Okay. My doctor released me to go back to work, as of tomorrow morning. Uh, with the vacation included, I'm under the forty-hour deal. Personally, I'm not ready to go back to work full-time. Uh, for me to do a ten-hour day is gonna be difficult. I'm asking the commission to waive the forty hours until I can, for a week or two, till I can get back on to my feet. I can go back part-time. Uh, I don't have a problem like next week, you know, doing the meetings in the mornings with the guys and getting them started and doing things like that. Um, but to, to do ten hours right now is gonna be difficult on me. It'd be strenuous on me to do the ten hours. I know the handbook says forty hours, which I'm still under that with vacation, correct, with Thursday and Friday?
No, because you don't qualify for vacation until you've been here for six months.
No, I don't qualify for holiday pay?
Uh, you have to work the day before and the day after the holiday.
Okay, well then, technically I'm over the- Okay, well, then technically I'm over the forty hours then. So, I mean, it's up to the board. If you want to extend that, fine. If not, you're going to have to terminate me. I mean, that's just the way the handbook reads. So, that is strictly you guys' decision, what you want to do there. My doctor did release me, however, I don't feel I can go back ten-hour days right now.
So, if I may interject, we spoke with our, um, insurance company counsel, and it suggested that we do a termination with eligibility to rehire. That way, there are no exceptions, and it sticks to the policy that we have, but it leaves everything completely open to you to make your decision that you want your job or, or not at this time. That way, we don't have to try to circumvent any of the forty-hour issues or the holiday pay, et cetera.
Okay. That, I mean, that's up to you guys. That's you guys' decision, that's why I'm here. So, that, if you decide to terminate, whatever, I mean, you just got to let me know. It's got to be one way or the other, so.
Well, I think, uh, that's what the handbook is, is there and it's pretty clear, and I think we don't have a lot of choice.
Well, the problem is, we're past the point of termination at this time. If, if we were having this discussion, it should have been last week, because we actually have already expired our time. So, all we have to do is tell you that you are re-eligible for hire. Uh, or, excuse me, eligible for rehire.
Yeah, you need to reapply for that position.
Okay. When it comes open.
Yeah.
Hello, yes, this is a authority to the Republic of the United States Department. We got a call.
Pardon?
I don't know what that was.
You got some backtalk, Alexis?
I think she shut it off, whatever it was.
Okay, the county vehicle's sitting in my yard. I will put all my stuff in it and the keys will be in it. Somebody will have to come get it.
Okay, we can do that quick enough.
I can have it ready.
You got somebody? I'm going out that way.
Yeah, I can, oh, I got to go out there, but we got a call, I stepped out of there about some, on one, one leaf over there, so.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
I'll get around that one anyways.
Just to let you guys know, I've had numerous complaints while I was in the hospital and since I've been home. So, I mean, beans, I'm not an employee, I'm not going to bring them up, but I'm going to just leave them go. But a lot of citizens have called and complained about stuff, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
We have Mr. Otting here, Alexis. Are we ready for him? Are you ready?
Yes.
All right, Daryl.
How are you today?
I am fine. Just got a couple of questions I'd like to have answered. And the concern bidding. How did you not put bids on a, on a, on the lake road project and the excavator? Did you not put bids out for that stuff?
We did for the excavator, sir.
For the excavator, did it?
Yeah, we got bids.
It says nothing about it in the official minutes.
Yeah, we had come to the commission with being with bids for new equipment and then used equipment that we had found as well.
Well, I remember we talked it, because they had a price for a new, new one, like two hundred and some thousand. You brought it one, didn't you?
Yeah, it was two sixteen, seven hundred and forty.
Right, you, yeah, we had, Brendan brought it here now, maybe they weren't-
Were they formal, formal bids? When you get into that amount of money, you're supposed to have formal bids.
Yes, they were a spec bid with all items we needed, and I've got all-
He has, you have the documentation, right?
Yes, from Pat Kamatsu, Matt, Pat Kamatsu was full though, John Deere was not willing to submit a bid. So, they specked out new machines, return leases, and then used machines if they had something that was comparable.
Well, I remember we talked about it, now maybe we haven't, you know.
Well, I, I would ask that maybe in the future-
And he has the documentation.
Something, something like that, maybe just put a little bit more in the minutes about what the bids were, because, you know, out here, we have no idea where our tax money's being spent, we have no idea. You just, you just bring up something, says, well, this is where it's at. Okay, but then, then you question it, or I do, when you, when you're talking about money that, you know, because before, we never, there was not going to be an excavator bought. And how about out of the lake on the, on the dirt work? Was there ever a bid on it, besides just Kenny?
No, I don't think so. But we decided there that, he was there, we wanted to, we, we talked, we could go a very expensive route, uh, with pilings and so forth, there would go, try to go the less expensive route, and there was a concern that this be attended to before winter, because of weather, so we, we took Mr. Brand's bid.
There-
I kind of was asked about that also. We probably should have had two bids on that.
There is a KSA nineteen dash two fourteen that says anything over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Two bids, yeah.
And that's why I was, was wondering about the excavator, because you had no idea. All I said was it was bought.
I'll have to explain that. The statute that you're talking about is for actually purchasing, and it says that it's not the same, in other words, there's an exemption for professional services. So, I believe if you hire service to be done in that type of a contract, it's not the same as actually purchasing something where you receive sealed bids.
Except as provided in subsection B in KSA nineteen dash two sixteen A and amendments thereto, all contracts for the expenditure of county monies for the construction of any courthouse, jail, or any other building, or the construction of any bridge, highway, road, dam, turnpike, or related structure, or standalone parking lots in excess of twenty-five thousand shall be awarded on a public letting to the lowest invested. Want me to read the rest of it?
Sure, read the exception, exceptions.
The person, firm, or corporation to whom the contract may be awarded shall give and file with the Board of County Commissioners a good and sufficient surty bond by a surty company filed with the Board of County Commissioners and a good sufficient surty, a surty company authorized to do business in the state of Kansas to be approved by the county attorney or county counselor, which would be you guys, the counselor, I would guess, in the amount of the contract and condition for the faithful performance of the contract. The provisions of subsection A shall not apply to the expenditure of county funds for professional services, to the provisions of KSA sixty-eight dash five twenty-one and amendments thereafter, to the purchase of contracts of insurance, or to the repair of any courthouse, jail, or any other building, or the repair or replacement of any such building's equipment when an emergency based upon public health or safety is declared by the Board of County Commissioners. Such emergency shall be defined as an occurrence of severe damage to a building or its equipment resulting from any natural or man-made cause, including fire, flood, earthquake, wind, storm, explosion, riot, terrorism, or hostile military or paramilitary action, or events of similar nature or character. Such damage must be so severe if prevents the building or equipment from being used for its intended function. Construction of a replacement building remains subject to the provisions of subsection A.
Yeah, you passed out back with the professional services exemption. It's in there.
Then any job is professional services, right? Doesn't matter what you do, then you don't have to have anything, no bids for anything ever, because anything you do is professional service.
No, a physical purchase is different than a professional service, or letting for contracts or service agreements that continue on into the future, those also are different types of purchases.
You read it one way, I read it another way, ma'am. It's a gray area.
Letting for bid is an excellent idea, however, I do believe in that particular situation, that is the only viable option. We had checked with Russell County to see what they had done in a similar situation. They still have not taken care of the issue that they needed to take care of from, I believe, two years ago.
I didn't know Russell County was Lincoln County.
No, they have property that had the same exact issue with the landslide of the lake.
That's all right. I still didn't know Russell County was Lincoln County. I think this is our problem, it was. It wasn't Russell County's problem, it was Lincoln County's problem, and I have no problem in saying that. I'm just asking why there wasn't more than one contractor left, have a chance at it.
Well, I believe that we discussed doing it ourselves, and we decided that the timeframe would not work with everything that we had going on. So, we looked at doing it in-house or hiring it out.
But you only hired it with one bid?
Correct.
And it's over twenty-five thousand dollars. The original bid was eighty-six thousand and something, and Kenny brought it in at fifty-five thousand, so he done a good job. I'm not bitching about that, but I would request that when you do things like this, either you get the bids or you don't. You, you can't do it one way, one time, and another way, another time.
You two, it was less than what he originally turned in, it was a quote, not a bid. If it was a bid, we would have paid the eighty-six thousand.
It says here, uh, dee, 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 dee.
Just, there's the difference in language between a quote and a bid. So, it, the fact that it's less, it was probably a quote he gave us and not an actual bid, but I don't-
I won't argue about that.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, I won't argue about that, Mr. Brendan. But the, uh, what I am saying is, there was only one bid left, or one, one chance for a bid left, and I'm not so sure that that's a, the proper way for, for it to go. If you're going to bid something, bid them. If you're not, just don't bid nothing.
Okay, the best we can do is answer your concern by saying, we note your concern.
Well, do, do, I got a question from you two. Do, do you think it's wrong that we, that a taxpayer requests that bid, things are bid, when it comes to that, that amount?
No, we should have, I think.
Yep.
Because, and I only have one more thing to say. With everything that goes around, how do you carry on an executive session on a telephone that's got public airways? Listen to the US government, how much stuff has been coming back and forth of people listening to stuff that is none of their business, but it's there. It's hard to make executive session if you're a-
Government listens to your phone every day anyway.
So, they're listening to this when they listen to that, that there.
Which I'm not so sure is right.
Okay, we got the noted on his two concerns, right?
Yep.
That's it?
Any other business? Alexis? Alexis, you, go ahead.
On that issue, I mean, it is, I do believe in taking bids. I believe in taking bids for nearly, nearly everything, but that's why we need to finish our purchasing policy, in particular for the departments, so that they don't have to take bids up to a certain dollar amount. And we had already discussed some of this and have, just haven't actually put it into a resolution. The amount of money that we did spend on this particular fix is a large expense. I could argue that it qualifies as one of the emergency situations that he was listing off in the statute. You can also argue that it's a professional service and it's not an actual purchase of commodity or, or continuing service, um.
Well, I think we should have got a bid though, because first of all, we got in a hurry on getting that done, and maybe that's okay, but it wasn't going anywhere, for one thing. And, and you're wanting to do a bid now on, uh, doing our new cameras or, uh, in the courthouse, and that's like fifteen hundred, you said we should get another bid, but here's eighty-eight thousand, and we just voted that through real fast. I agree with him on this, we should have got another bid.
Well, I think, though, the-
I'm not opposed to bidding.
The problem, not a problem, he came in with two issues, and we answered the first one, and the second, we said noted. We note your concern, and that's all we can do right now, because we're not going to blow the damn thing and build a million-dollar structure out there.
No, I just say in the future, we should take, if we got an eighty-thousand-dollar issue, uh, we should take several bids on it.
Well, we will, that's-
Yes.
Yeah, we will. So, we noted his concern, and that's the end of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I understand. Okay, so, we need to potentially, let's see. I guess, Brendan, I can't see you, you're sitting there still.
He's gone.
No, he left.
Oh, okay, so then, but, but he was there for the session when we had-
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kruger, and, okay. So, is there anything else that we need to discuss?
I don't have anything. Do you guys?
Not for me.
I don't think so.
Okay, so then, we don't meet again until Monday?
That's correct, the seventh of December, is it? No, it's the night.
Oh, I do have something, I apologize. What do you guys want to do about gifts for the county and for the new, or the Christmas Eve holiday?
Okay, so in the past, we had been giving chamber bucks.
Twenty-five-dollar chamber bucks, I believe.
Where did we purchase those from?
Employee benefits fund.
So, then it should be in there, because we've been budgeting that similarly every year?
Yes.
Okay, I, I agree with the chamber bucks, because it gives them an option for spending. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, is this for every employee?
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, so, and i- it's for every full-time and part, regular part-time employee is what we've done in the past. So, if they regularly work for us, they get it.
Okay.
Regardless of how many hours they work, but that's, you guys can make that, you can tell me what you want to do.
That'd be fine with me.
Yep, I'd go.
Alexis, okay with you?
Yes.
Yeah, we still agree.
Would you like a motion for the money?
It's up to you. I can put it, that you guys approve.
If you can do it, do it, do it, it's approved.
And you want to know about New Year's Eve, Christmas Eve, Elaine?
Yes, so, in past, sometimes they've given us the entire day, sometimes they've just given us four hours, sometimes they've given us two hours, and sometimes they've given us nothing. Christmas is on a Wednesday. It's kind of up to you guys. Anything that you do is like your normal courthouse staff, staff that works, highway department, would get whatever you say off. So, if you said four hours, then it would be four hours from there in time. All of your emergency services people, since they can't take off, is just to give an additional four hours of holiday time. But that is strictly up to you guys, I'm not-
That's Christmas Eve.
Is that in the budget?
Or New Year's Eve?
Was that in the budget?
We normally do it every year, but you're going to pay them whether they're here or they're not.
Sure. And you've been doing it every year?
Every, yeah. But there's been a couple of years that they have not.
So, four hours off, so they pick off like noon, or, or eleven, or whatever their hours are? What do you think, Alexis? That fine with you?
Well, I've always had an issue with this, because it gets very far into the weeds with each department, and now the county highway department only has a four-day work week anyhow. The sheriff's department and the EMS, they work regardless, so then they get extra pay in their paycheck. The office personnel just get to leave at lunchtime, and I, you know, I'm not sure how to make that all equitable.
Normally, what the, has been done in the past is that the motion is for however many hours, and then whatever that ending time, so if we say four-thirty, then we work till, till twelve, we would close the courthouse, because our normal lunch has hours or half an hour.
But if you give those four hours to the departments that are working guaranteed overtime shifts, is that four hours of overtime then?
It's not four hours of overtime, because they have to physically work it-
Okay.
-for it to qualify, so it'd just be four hours of extra pay.
Okay. But then, does every department get their choice of getting paid or, and staying at work, or leaving early?
Normally, no choice is given. So, like, if you tell us that we have to work till four-thirty, somebody in each office has to work till four-thirty. There is no choice for the courthouse to close unless you guys authorize that. Does that make sense? For, and the same with the highway department. Now, the highway department could work with one person, and we've seen that happen in the past, but what are they really doing if everybody's taking off? But, but they have a little bit more flexibility than what we have.
Well, I, one thing about the courthouse, it'd be if we left, like, if everybody left like at noon, some of the public may want to still come here and do business at two in the afternoon, and then they'd be upset that the courthouse is closed early.
Not if they know about it.
I mean, we don't want to get the criticism that we're taking off early.
That's okay, Leanne had a telephone call on Thursday, it's at nine AM, wanting to That's okay. Leanne had a telephone call on Thursday, it's at nine AM, wanting to know what, why we didn't have our hours published in there on our phone system. Well, why would you call at Thanksgiving Day?
Thanksgiving.
But.
Some people are always gonna have an issue.
I support the four hours.
And then we close, like, four hours for everybody, and they all just have it differently based on their department. Like, oh, some get overtimes, they're not overtime, but like we have, the highway department's different than the EMS.
Same procedure we used before.
That's, that's fine with me, too. Alexis, did that arrive with you?
I actually have never heard any complaints from any particular department about how it's done. I mean, if we close the courthouse, basically, we're just talking about closing the courthouse early on.
Yeah, that, that.
On Christmas Eve, and then everybody else, and, and then sheriff's department and the EMS getting extra pay.
Right, obviously, they're working.
Well, and the health department would be closed.
Health department at noon also.
Yeah.
Should we publish that in the paper?
Yes, normally, and that's the reason why I'm asking, is because we'll need to publish it if.
Well, definitely. So, and sign on the front saying, close at noon.
How does that work in the departments where if they don't work the day before and after the holiday, how are they getting their holiday pay if they're on shifts like that? Or are they listed as an exemption?
They just automatically get them, because, um, I think it's because they're shift workers. I, we've never, like, made an issue of it, I guess. I think most of them do, um, it'd only be those that are, like, on their days, scheduled for their day, days off, but.
I mean, I hate to single out one source here, but I guess if you're only working Sunday and Monday, and then you know you have the rest of the week off anyhow, to get extra pay when you're not really scheduled to work the day that everybody else gets off is really a bonus in addition to what everyone else.
Yes, yes, the, so the emergency services people actually get that extra time.
Right, which they're not scheduled to work, is what I'm saying. It's not as if they're getting paid for a time. Only two people would be on for that particular day.
Correct.
Only people that are there on that day should get that extra pay, in my opinion. If, whoever the crew is that's scheduled for Christmas Eve, they should get the extra pay. Not everyone in that department, because none of them are gonna be working it anyhow. I'm a little confused about that.
Well, we've never, you know, some counties do, they, they don't have holiday time, and if you work it, you get paid double time. I used to work, private employers do that, but.
Yeah, I almost feel that whoever's on shift that day should get the extra pay, not the entire department get the extra pay. Then the county's paying for everybody to get money when really only two people are having to work their Christmas Eve or Christmas Day. Do they get extra pay on Christmas Day, or is it just part of their regular schedule?
They get paid, yes. So, so basically, all of the emergency services, their holiday occurs on the holiday. So if, if Christmas lands today, they get paid twelve hours whether they're scheduled to work or not. So the people that are working, you know, in essence, get double time for part of their shift. The people that aren't working are just getting twelve hours of extra pay. Now, you know, I guess you could force them to use it during the week, and then you're not paying it on top of, but then you're paying somebody to come in and work for them.
Right.
I, I don't know what's fair and what's not fair. Um, I'm a little, I'm a little peeved at the twelve hours of holiday time. And I'll probably have every emergency worker down my throat, but I just don't think that's fair for those of us that work, that get eighty hours versus a hundred and forty, or a hundred and twenty hours. That's forty hours more a year that you're paying them out in holiday time.
Right.
But maybe they deserve it, because they're working long shifts. I don't, I don't know.
Well, if they had have reduced pay for their sleep time, I could argue that, but they get full-time pay for sleep time, so. I don't know what the numbers would add up to if you did that math, but it just confuses me as to why everybody gets their extra pay for that week when they're not even scheduled on that day. I think the people who have to work that particular day should, in the, in the example of Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve, not necessarily the holiday day, but if we're gonna do special exemptions for the day before, why should everyone get to reap the benefit when they're not even scheduled to work anyhow?
Right. I can tell you, when I first started here, we did not give anything for part-time employees, because I didn't qualify for anything. Um, because I started part-time in October and went full-time in July, conveniently after the birth of my son. But, um, during that first year that I worked here, I did AP and somebody else did payroll. But I wanna say, at that given point in time, the new, the Christmas Eve holiday, which was an extra holiday pay, they did not pay anybody except for those people that were working. And it cost a big stink with emergency services people, because they felt like they were getting shafted. Now, mind you, that was when everybody was still on eight-hour shifts, and we were all getting paid equally, you know, for the holiday. So they felt like they were losing something out, so, you know, I wanna say maybe the third year I worked here, the commissioners fixed that. And then I think, one of the years, they just took it away. They thought, if everybody's gonna complain about it, we just won't offer it.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to address the fact that we gave fifty cents across the board to everyone, because we were so concerned about not differentiating, but now, and we can, you know, go back and forth about multiple issues, but now we differentiate, because we're actually paying people to not go to work on the day they're not scheduled. And then we're gonna let everybody else who is scheduled just go home early. They don't get any extra pay.
Yeah. Can I ask a question? If we got everybody to agree to take their leave time, would you guys be willing to close the courthouse? If they used their leave time for half a day?
I think that's more appropriate, because you have to have it done by December twenty-fifth anyhow.
How about I ask that with county employees, or, or you guys just say that that's okay if we can get a hundred percent guarantee? You're always gonna have some employee that's gonna say, I don't have any leave time.
You mean for the tw- New Year's Eve, Christmas Eve, day, the whole day off?
No, just a half a day.
Oh, we take leave time.
But is there anyone that actually has no leave time, or they're just cutting into their eighty-hour rollover?
Here in the courthouse, there isn't anybody, highway department, there are employees that don't have leave time.
Okay.
Uh, let's just say this, there are employees that only carry over the twelve hours that they accrue on the twenty-sixth of each month.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
No, I don't.
Well, then, I think then they. They can determine that, you know, if the department needs them to work, then they work, and then they have it open with that particular person who doesn't have any leave time. He, they can man the, the phones or something, but I would agree to that. Let's say that you can close your department if everyone's willing to take their leave time at noon on Christmas Eve.
Okay, so how about this, I will ask each of the department heads to see if all of their employees would be on board. That's like the health department, clerk's office, highway department. Um, and then I will get back with you guys on Monday, and that should still get us time to advertise.
That also means that whoever's working their shift in our emergency services gets four hours of pay that day. You see what I'm saying? Because they're not gonna use up their leave time and go home. They're gonna be there regardless, so they would be the only ones getting paid extra.
I wouldn't see why they would get paid any extra, if we're all using our leave time.
Okay, okay, because they have their Christmas, okay, yeah, they have their Christmas pay.
That doesn't work for the sheriff's deputies, or, or that.
They just, they just get, basically, they get twelve hours of holiday. Now, if any of them work on a Friday, if a holiday lands on a Friday, so for example, the day after Thanksgiving landed on a Friday, the dispatchers only receive eight hours, because that's what their normal scheduled shift is.
Okay.
So.
I see, okay. So everyone in that department is getting their Christmas pay that week anyhow?
Yes.
Whether they work on, and the people that are working the Christmas shift, they are getting their extra pay?
Yes.
Okay, then let's just do that.
Okay, I will send out an email to all the departments, and then I'll get back with you guys on Monday and see. And otherwise, they'll just work unless you guys change something different on Monday.
Okay.
Great, okay. Permission to close down if they all agree to use their leave time to do it.
Okay.
Anything else?
I move with a journey, go help Randy move cows.
Yeah, let's help, come over and help. What, Alexis?
Until next Monday, then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
See ya.
I don't wanna move cows today. I'm gonna work all weekend.